So we're still doing some housekeeping here. So any folks who are on the line, Luke, do we need to give Susan a different dial-in number?
Susan, so when you dial in, when you connect to the webinar, you'll be given the option to connect to computer audio or phone call. You're going to want to select phone call and dial that number, and it will give you an audio PIN. Type in that PIN because right now you're called into our public comment line, which will work, but it will be a delay for you, and it will be a little difficult to work through that meeting.
Okay, well, we'll wait for you to call back in, Susan. Luke, did we have Rochelle with us?
Yes, Rochelle's connected now.
Fabulous. All right, we're just, anyone who's on the line, just hold on. We're waiting just one moment here.
Okay, can I do a voice check?
Perfect, Susan, yes, that's good. Much better, thank you for doing that. All right, so here we are, ready to call to order the regular session of the Council of the City of Atascadero. And I will start by asking Mayor Protem Borbo to lead us in a pledge to the flag.
All right, please stand and joining me in saluting our nation's flag. And thank you, Susan, for having the flag ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go ahead and call roll. I'll note Councilmember Newsom is absent. Councilmember Fonzie?
Here.
Councilmember Funk?
Here.
Mayor Protem Borbo?
Here.
Ma'am Moreno? All present.
Can't hear.
I can't hear the mayor.
You are muted, Heather.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
All right, I think what happened is you muted me during the pledge, Luke, and I should have muted him anyway. Months and months later, and we still have these fun little technology glitches. So, well, if you are watching or listening to the city council meeting tonight, we welcome you. If you would like to speak at any time during a time that's set aside for either community forum or during public comment for one of the agenda items, please call 805-538-2888 to provide public comment via phone. When you do call, please let us know which item that you would like to speak on. And once again, that number is 805-538-2888. And of course, if you are on the webinar tonight, you can do that live. And we will sometimes have people that have emailed in public comments, so we have a lot of options. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Funk and a second by Councilmember Fonzie. And we will waive the reading in full of all ordinances appearing on this agenda. And the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion before the city council votes. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Fonzie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Borbo?
Yes.
Ma'am Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're moving on to the consent calendar, and all items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff, and they can be approved in one motion if there's no member of the council or public that wishes to comment or ask questions. If we do have any comment or discussion that's desired by anyone, we will remove the item from the consent calendar and consider it in a listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council concerning that item before any action is taken. So I'll ask my council, is there anyone wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar?
No.
I see none. I will ask Luke, is there anybody wishing to pull or comment on an item on the consent calendar?
There is no one for this item.
Thank you. And I will ask our city clerk, is there anybody who has emailed in with any comment on the consent calendar?
There is not.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Fonzie and a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fonzie?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Borbo?
Yes.
Ma'am Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So now we're on to the community forum portion of our meeting. This is the part of our meeting that is reserved for persons wishing... Yes?
Doesn't the update from the city manager come first?
Oh goodness, I scrolled right. I try to keep things technology, thank you very much. We will move on to updates from the city manager. And for those of you that were chomping at the bit for community forum, it's right after this, thank you. And that would be Ms. Riggert.
Thank you, mayor. Luke, can you help me share my screen? There we go. And... Okay, did that work? Am I showing my screen?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, you are.
Perfect, okay. So the first thing I want to talk about tonight is the annual River and Creek Cleanup Day. So the annual Creek Cleanup Day is held each year in the early fall to remove trash before the first rains or first flush in order to prevent trash and toxic materials from entering our waterway. There were over 50 volunteers that turned out this year. And during that three-hour event, the Slow Beaver Brigade brought in six truckloads of trash from the southern section of the Salinas River. A group from ABC Church worked to clean up Atascadero Creek on the west side of Highway 101. And at the end of the event, a 20-yard dumpster was filled with waste, which is about the size of a backyard swimming pool. Plus, two dumpsters were filled, 10-yard dumpsters were filled with scrap metal and tires. There was an increase this year in dumped household batteries, which leaked toxic chemicals into the soil when they break down and into the water. Other items found this year included shopping carts, propane tanks, as well as Sharp's waste. The Atascadero Mutual Water Company and the City of Atascadero would especially like to thank Alps, the Slow Beaver Brigade, Atascadero Waste Alternatives, and Chicago Grade Landfill for their help, participation, and generosity that combined to help make this year's cleanup event a success. Great day, we were able to do it even with COVID restrictions, so I'm glad we were able to do that. We also had fun with our F-14 ribbon-cutting event. So we held a groundbreaking ceremony with the city council at the corner of Pueblo and El Camino, where La Mexicana is open for business during the roadworks with plenty of places to park. We celebrated another groundbreaking for the same project at the corner of Robles and Sombria Avenue. And we're also happy to report that the 2020 pavement resurfacing project that began in May is now complete. Councilmembers celebrated this accomplishment with a formal ribbon-cutting ceremony at several locations. And this project included pavement rehabilitations for the sections of San Anselmo from Monterey to Ardea and Ardea Road from San Anselmo to Portola. Crack grinding and resurfacing also took place in portions of Garcia Road, Monterey Road, Portola Road, and Kerboro Road. And to see a complete list and current status of all our city road projects, you can visit the Public Works section on the City of Atascadero website at atascadero.org. We have all of the current projects there, the status, plus budgeted projects, so a lot of good information there. I also want to tell you about the summer concert series. We have one final concert for our 2020 Summer Concert Series, and that is on Saturday, October 3rd. It will be aired on KPRL Radio from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., or you can watch it from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on the city's YouTube channel at atascadero.org/youtube. The entire 2020 season of concert videos are available on our YouTube channel, so everyone can enjoy them whenever they like. And as always, we're very grateful to all our wonderful sponsors and for Atascadero Bible Church and KPRL for helping us present this year's virtual version of our summer concert series. I also want to give a brief update on the police chief recruitment. As we all know, our chief, Gerald Haley, will be retiring here in the middle of October. And we are working very hard to find someone to fill his shoes. We did hold interviews last Friday on October, I'm sorry, on September 18th. It was a full day of, well, it was a half-day of interviews for each of the panelists, plus they had got to spend some time in the evening with us as well. The candidates were each interviewed by three different interview panels. In addition to that, they got to spend some time with the Atascadero Police Association, who also had representatives talk to each of the candidates. Each of those panels interviewed all of the candidates, and each interview took around 50 minutes, so just about an hour. So by the time the candidates had worked through all that, it had been quite an extensive process. I do want to thank the panelists. They spend a lot of time reviewing the materials, the background materials, the applications, resumes, and then also attending and interviewing the candidates. They spend the full day there doing that. This was the first time that we did all of our interviews by Zoom. That was a little bit of a challenge, but all of our panelists were up for that. I do want to tell you a little bit about each of the panels. For the police professional panel, we had Police Chief Jody Cox. He's the police chief in the city of Morro Bay. He was one of our rating panelists. Chief Gerald Haley, our own chief here, and Lieutenant Paul Van Meel. He's a police lieutenant in the city of Santa Maria. They made up our police professional panel, or technical panel, we call it. We had an executive management panel, and that was made up of Matt Bronson. He's the city manager in the city of Grover Beach. Jim Lewis, our own Jim Lewis, who used to work here and is now the city of Tismo Beach's city manager and a resident of Atascadero. And then Jerry Rangel, the Director of Administrative Services here in the city of Atascadero, rounded out our executive management panel. Our community panel was made up of Jeff Osland. He is a business owner, Chamber of Commerce board member, resident, and very active here at the city. We see him at a lot of council meetings. We had Pastor Heather Branton. She's the pastor of Community Church of Atascadero, Kiwanis member. She and her wife are both very active here in the city of Atascadero, and we see her at quite a few council meetings. Tom Butler is our superintendent of schools at the Atascadero Unified School District. He took the day and helped us out, as did Wendy Lewis, who's the president and CEO of El Camino's homeless organization. That was the community panel. I got to observe the community panel. I was not a rating member, was there to help out with technology, which should just scare everybody that they know how good I am at the technology. But it went off very, very well. The Atascadero Police Association also spent 50 minutes with each candidate. And we had Sergeant Matt Chesson, Corporal Scott Pippen, Officer Wade Knowles, and Officer Ron Overacher on those panels. They did rate them internally, and they gave me inputs to that, but their scores did not calculate into the overall scores. From here, now that we have some TOPs and we have some scoring on that, we will take, go on and move to second interviews for the top candidate or candidate. And from that second interview, we plan on spending about a day with the candidate, going through, meeting the department, meeting with the department executive team, meeting with the city manager, and really exploring a lot of those things. From that process, again, we would narrow it down to the top candidate or candidates and perform backgrounds, both hiring a professional background investigator and also doing our own personal background checks, more informal visiting or contacting their current employers. So we are moving through all that process. It continues to move forward, and I hope to bring back to the council soon a very qualified candidate for your approval. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Rochelle. I have a question. If nobody is found to be of the caliber that we desire in Atascadero, what would happen at that point?
At that point, we don't want to settle for less. We definitely want somebody that's amazing, that fits the community, that's the right fit for us. And so what we would do is we would appoint an interim police chief, and then we would wait a few months and go back and try again until we found somebody that was right for the job.
Okay, thank you. Are there any of my colleagues that have a question for the city manager? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Rochelle, and we will move on. So now we are at the community forum portion of our meeting, which is reserved for persons who want to address the council on any matter not on this agenda this evening and over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and so we will have a timer going. Please state your name for the record before making your presentation, and we will allow a maximum of 30 minutes total for community forum. And with that, community forum is open. I will ask Luke, do we have anyone on the webinar wishing to provide public comment?
We have no one on the webinar. And a reminder to those attending the webinar, if you'd like to make a public comment at any time during the meeting, please click the raise hand button, and that'll alert me that you'd want to talk during the public comment portion. For community forum, we do have one caller, Jeff Boston.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Wanted to make a couple comments. First of all, my wife and I have been going to the Atascadero Farmers Market on a regular basis this year, and I hope we continue it. It is fantastic, and it's nice to be able to get good fruits and vegetables and other goods in our city. So I wanted to give a positive out for that. On the other note, because I can speak, of course, as a resident of the city of Atascadero, just a plug on the D-20 initiative that's on the ballot and the one thing that I would hope people would do their research on, which is if the city of Atascadero does not keep minimum staffing with emergency services, then you have a high likelihood of having your property insurance go up. It has happened in the city north of us due to them not meeting the requirements for their annual, I'm not sure what it's called, but their rating with the insurance group that rates the city. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. Nick, or Nick, Luke, do we have anyone else, either on the phone or on the webinar, that would like to provide public comment?
We have no additional callers or folks in the webinar.
Okay, thank you. I will ask our city clerk, are there any comments that were received by email that are to be read into the record?
Yes, I have two. The first one is from Mitch Paskin. "I am submitting this statement about the Oak Ridge Estates Residential Project and how it is affecting the safety of the people who drive the roads in 3F Meadows. First of all, I would like to request that any response to this and any following messages on this issue be presented during the open city council meeting. The people have a right to hear how the city will handle this problem. At the last city council meeting, I submitted, excuse me, I submitted five issues about Oak Ridge Estates. The community development director kindly spent an hour on the phone with us. He was very patient with us and openly discussed the issues, but none of the promised actions have actually occurred. This is very disappointing. The city of Atascadero, by approving this project and then reviving it, created very unsafe roads in 3F Meadows. The city cannot just say that the project was approved, no matter how flawed it is, and just walk away from the problem. It is your responsibility to protect the people of Atascadero. You're going to have to deal with the problem eventually. San Marcos Road was, was, is a local hillside road rated at 500 average daily trips. It is the choke point. People have gone off the road. There have been head-on collisions, and as the traffic increases, the incidents will increase. The city has issued building permits to Castle Rock Development outside of the provisions in the Plan Overlay 11. The extension of Senegal has to be opened before Phase 2 permits can be issued. The city has argued that the road has to be completed, not opened, for building permits to be issued. If that is correct, the decision to open the road to the public has been left to Castle Rock Development. Is it best practices to allow a developer to dictate to the city when and what the developer can do? I think the city council should take responsibility and take control of the situation. I think the city should stop the construction until Senegal is open for traffic as intended by the PD-11. I am still waiting for clarification on what lots are associated with what phases of the development. I am also waiting for an answer about what it means regarding the conditions of approval that Mr. Shetler has shifted from building housing to selling lots. When does Phase 2 end? San Marcos Roads Repair is mandated at the end of Phase 2. The event should be well-defined. I am still calling for geological and soils testing on the Senegal Road corridor down into Paradise Valley. If there was a failure once, it could fail again. If the corridor is unstable and can't support a road, then all the traffic generated by Oak Ridge Estates will use San Marcos Road. That traffic volume will exceed the 500 average daily trip rating of the road, and be a very dangerous situation without any possible mitigation." For more information about Oak Ridge Estates, please go to www.road41.com. Again, www.road41.com, thank you. Okay, that's the end of that one. Second email is from Deborah Claire Paskin. "Safety of the residents of 3F Meadows driving San Marcos and Los Altos roads is rapidly degrading. First, construction traffic for the housing development, called Oak Ridge Estates, is increasing along with residential and visitor traffic. Second, Senegal Road is not open for use as the second exit to handle increased traffic. And let's face it, Senegal Road is not a safe road and will probably only be used as an emergency exit. This has been verbally stated by several city council members, past and present. Therefore, the bulk of traffic will use San Marcos and Los Altos Road. This leads to the third point, which is safety. San Marcos and Los Altos are designated rural hillside local roads. This means they are rated to handle 500 average daily trips. In addition, many blind curves, sharp drop-off points, and the lack of guardrails only make for a very unsafe drive between a 500 daily trips." It's, sorry, unsafe drive even at 500 daily trips. "There has already been a partial slide on a hill on one of the blind curves of San Marcos Road. Concrete median barriers have been placed to stop a complete slide of the hill. At 24 inches wide, these barriers shrink the width of our already narrow road. I must digress a bit to clarify that Los Altos was changed to a rural hillside collector road, which is able to handle a greater volume of traffic. However, no upgrades have been made to Los Altos to qualify it as a collector road, just the name. So much for safety and holding the developer accountable. Something so simple as taking my dogs for a walk becomes a whole process. Now I have to drive out of my neighborhood several miles to walk safely. Adding guardrails, stripping the pavement, and adding street platforms would go a long way to improving safety on Los Altos and San Marcos roads. As of this date, no safety measures have been taken. If anything, these roads are in a state of further disrepair. Patching the worst areas of the road is small consolation and only a Band-Aid fix. As I understand it, this development would not be approved today because of the inadequate roads and increased fire hazard. For many residents, much of what we own is tied up in our homes. What are we supposed to do? Our safety, our bucolic way of life, and our home values are going away. Many of us living here in 3F Meadows would gladly work with the city to find a suitable compromise. Our lives literally depend on it. Will you work for us?" And that's all I have in terms of email comments.
Thank you very much. And I would ask staff, our community development director, and it may end up including our city engineer as well, but for you to be in touch with Mr. Paskins and look at the issues that he and Ms. Paskin also brought up to see what needs to, what needs to be done, what the requirements are, what our, certainly what our commitment is to follow through and to see what sort of issues there might be that we need to address. And because it is not a publicly noticed item, we will not be having a discussion on that. We will move on now to, community forum is closed, and we will now move on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is B-1, the Del Rio Road Commercial Area Specific Plan Amendment. And I will start by asking if we have any ex parte, and I'll just kind of go across on my screen. I'll start with Councilmember Funk.
Yes, I have ex parte with Jenny Kim, Ted Lawton, and Clint Pierce with respect to an aspect of the plan that was changed within the planning commission.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Borbo?
I've had, not real recently, but I have had discussions with both Clint Pierce and Rick Armett, who one owns property inside the specific area and one right next to it.
And Councilmember Fonzie?
No ex parte.
Okay, and I have had conversations over the last year or so with Clint Pierce and just also with general members of the public. No one in particular comes to mind that it would require ex parte. I don't know if you all can still hear me. I think I lost...
We can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me, which is great. I completely lost my go-to-meeting webinar. So at least I'm on the phone. So with that, ex parte, we will go ahead, and I'll turn it over to our community development director, Mr. Dunsmore.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, council mayor. I'm just trying to get the right screen up for you to view. I can see you're looking at the wrong screen right now. So if you just give me a moment here, I will try and toggle that over. Trying to figure out how to do that, just a moment.
There we go.
Are you on the right screen there?
No.
Not for you, no. You've got email up there for us.
Not good. Let's just try and change that over. Excuse me, just a sec, let's get that going.
I'm glad I'm not the only one having tech issues tonight.
Yeah, it's not working like it normally does. Let's just try this again. All right. Still not the right screen. I could just, here we go. Let's see. Don't know why it won't toggle over. Hmm. Luke, if you can hear me, possibly you could assist me with toggling the screen over. I'm not able to...
Yeah, Phil, I'll be right, I'll be right down.
Thank you so much.
Phil, is there anything that you can start on before the screen? Or should we wait for...
Yes. So tonight, we have for you the long-awaited discussion on the Del Rio Commercial Area Specific Plan. It was back in March that the city council last spoke about giving direction on the specific plan amendments. And tonight, we're here to give you the full background, our recommendations moving forward, which will include amendments to the specific plan and the original environmental impact report that covered the property when we had a Walmart development and we had a large retail development on the property. So tonight, we've got some wonderful solutions moving forward that will not only reduce the cost to the city, but the cost to the applicants, preserve additional land for development, and give us options to really guide land use. and give us options to really guide land use into the future. So I think this is a really exciting milestone if we can get there. And we're going to share with you some of the traffic analysis. On the phone tonight, we also do have our traffic consultant helped us along with this endeavor. And our Public Works Director Nick DeBar is also going to be available to weigh in on some of the technical topics associated with the specific plan. So let me just get this show on the road and go through some of the topics here if I can get the right screen up here. All right, our IT person is here right away. My presentation is over on this side here. Thank you. All right, can you see my screen now?
Yeah. Perfect.
Yes. All right. Sorry about that delay. There was a hidden little item in the corner there. Let's get going with that and go through that. So first of all, I mentioned March was the last time we really had a significant discussion on this topic. And really what this comes down to is how do the current plans that we have on the books today, how do current demands change traffic at the intersection of Del Rio and Highway 101? And how should we amend the specific plan response? Those are really, when it comes down to it, the two key topics that we're going to be discussing tonight. And in summary, there's about four different, three different items that we're really going to get into detail on. The specific plan itself, the amendments to it, and then the amendments to the environmental impact report. And it's only a very rare occasion when we can amend an EIR. You can really only do that when you're actually creating less significant impacts than when the EIR was originally written. Otherwise, you've got to recirculate that EIR and go through a much more significant process. So tonight, fortunately, the amendments we're looking at tonight actually reduce the environmental impacts. And so then the state allows us to do what's called an addendum, which is a really expedient process. So just a little bit of a background. When we talk about the Del Rio Commercial Area Specific Plan, it's generally the area outlined in red that you see on your screen. It's primarily on the east side of El Camino Real at Del Rio. Now, there's one parcel that was included on the west side of El Camino Real, and that's the area where the new Hilton Home Suites Hotel was recently completed. But all those other properties right at the corner of Del Rio and El Camino, some vacant lots there, there's a gas station on the one side, on the south side. Those are all outside the plan, even though they contribute to the area traffic at Del Rio and at El Camino Real, which is a really important point to note because we'll be talking a lot tonight about traffic. This whole discussion is about traffic and road improvements and how we can make things work not only now, but also for a long time into the future. So when we look back, the city originally approved the specific plan in 2012. And at that time, retail was in full swing. Even though we were post-recession, things were really coming back. Walmart was really interested in developing this property and we were active as a city to try and facilitate that and to try and facilitate commercial development, retail development on the other side of the road, on the north side. So there was two big specific components, two different property owners. One we call the Annex, one that we call the Walmart property on either side of Del Rio Road and along El Camino Real. And essentially, it was a 39-acre total specific plan area. We were assuming about 260,000 square feet of retail, a lot of retail. And a lot of that retail really had a significant amount of traffic that all came and went in a couple different peak periods of time, whether that be in the evenings or on weekends. So what that did, it really prompted a significant traffic change in Del Rio. Few years down the road, Walmart cancels their plans, the property's still on the market. Now, what we're concerned about is even if they sell that property, can even be, can it even be developed with retail? Probably not. Because from what we understand, they are going to put deed restrictions on it with the sale. But in addition to that, things have changed in the retail world. We've talked about this before, we talked about this back in March. The trend isn't so much retail and isn't so much large retail. The trend is things that have jobs, things that have visitor serving, things that are place-making, things that are what we call experiential. So it's a different set of land uses that we're seeing. And we've gone even further that direction since March of this year with COVID. Unfortunately, retail uses have really become predominant on the internet. In combination with that, what's happened in this past year, this July, is the master plans of development and the approved maps for both of the properties, both the north side and south side of the specific plan have expired. And at the same time, we have a proposal from the north side of the property to do an office and light manufacturing project, a really interesting project that can create head of household jobs in the area, bring in small industry, bring in business, and bring in a thing that's currently in demand. So the questions are, how can we unlock that and allow that development to proceed? Why haven't we been able to proceed? Well, nothing's been able to move in the specific plan because the traffic improvements need to happen before it can move forward. That's how that original EIR is written. It let Walmart go forward first. They were responsible for a large portion of the improvements, including a big roundabout at El Camino and Del Rio. And they were responsible for paying fair share for the rest of the roundabouts that we had proposed over the overpass. But nobody else could move forward until that happened. So if they chose not to move forward, we were locked up. And we've been locked up for many years. Even though they've canceled their plans to develop, we're still locked up. So really, our task, our task is to unlock everything while assuming a very reasonable land use plan for the future and assuming phased traffic improvements in the future so we can be confident that we can accommodate a variety of land uses while not having a significant traffic impact. So really, what we're looking at now is what are the assumptions? Well, we're basing our assumptions not just off our thoughts, but what we've received for applications. We've received an application from the property owner on the north side for the business park. We've received some proposals from other properties in the area that tell us there's, there's different uses going on, less retail. At the same time, our city council has essentially curbed the development of fuel stations and drive-through restaurants. Those two land uses alone are very, very substantial drivers of traffic and especially at peak hours and can really push us a long way towards a failure of some of these intersections. So pulling those things out can really get us a lot of other development that is healthier for the community. And our new traffic analysis clearly demonstrates that we can move forward in phases while gradually completing improvements and improvements at a much less significant scale and much less expensive than the original roundabout configuration. So there's the image that was approved and it still is approved today. It's a series of free roundabouts. Caltrans endorsed that plan. It allowed the Walmart project and another large retail project and accommodated for regional growth in the whole area based on what we call general plan build-out. So build-out of everything we anticipate under the general plan as properties are zoned today. But the new land use plan assumes less traffic because of less retail. And even the hotel that we recently, CSO completed over there really takes a big chunk out of, out of future traffic. That area was also retail. But then no drive-through restaurants, no fuel stations inside the specific plan. And then more office, light industrial and visitor serving uses. All those things begin to balance out. And even though they have a few trips, the trips are spread out over a much longer time period, which really helps traffic. And these are all, all these traffic assumptions are based on what we've seen coming into the city, what folks have proposed. Now, when we look at the specific plan, it was written like a mini zoning ordinance. It was written to respond very specifically to these development plans that the two property owners proposed at the time. Very detailed on that end. So the amendments we're proposing tonight really try and step back from that, allow a logical set of land uses and a logical set of land uses that really help us out with the traffic impact. So tonight, the amendments that we're proposing include modifying the project descriptions. Now, keep in mind, we don't have master plans of development submitted yet. So we're generically modifying descriptions to talk about the south site, the north site, and assuming a certain set of land uses, but knowing that these property owners will have to submit a master plan of development that will need to go through a review process. And through that, we can assign the mitigation and really determine consistency with the specific plan and be able to condition and evaluate the development at that time. The amendments also include amending the list of land uses. Now, what we're wanting to do is refine them down a little further to be consistent with prior city council actions, which include the removal of drive-through restaurants or removal of fuel stations, the removal of other land uses that are fairly traffic-intensive, and dialing back down the amount of outdoor land uses that take up a substantial amount of land. And we can talk, we'll talk about land uses in detail a little more later. I do have some slides that actually show all the land uses because I think we're going to want to get into a land use discussion a little more and, and talk about the nuances of that. And then modifying and reducing the site specifics so that we can really be a little more generic. I think the specific plan was so specific that it was catered towards a large retail store along with a garden center. And it was, it was described so clearly that it really could only be for one specific tenant. So we'd better remove ourselves from that and allow something that's more related to what we're going to see in the future. And again, of course, the biggest part of this, amending the traffic mitigation measures, unlocking us so that we can proceed and we can entertain the current proposals we have on the table today. So I think I talked about this already, elimination of drive-throughs, fuel stations, reducing some of the outdoor storage. There's also some land uses in there that just didn't seem appropriate for the specific plan area, medical office uses, medical uses, adult oriented businesses, residential care, which is basically a residential use. These are some of the things that might be better suited elsewhere where we're trying to retain this as a job center, a commercial center, and a visitor-serving center. Now, at the planning commission, we did have a member of the public chime in. And I understand this member of the public is seeking to purchase the Walmart site. And they said, you know, we're developing plans for the site and we really would like to allow for a lodging facility that includes some area for parking overnight stays of RVs on the site. And the planning commission did make a recommendation to the council to actually add that land use, but we hadn't had that in the original recommendation. So that is in your recommendation tonight for the south site. Now, the image I'm showing you here is one of the several images that we did receive from the owner on the north side of the property. And it kind of gives you a little flavor of what the intent is for that, which is a more of a contemporary styled business park that can accommodate office uses. It could be like manufacturing uses. There could be visitor-serving uses. I liken this kind of thing somewhat to what you might see at Tin City, for example, or other areas of the city, county, where you see that you've got, you know, the jobs and you've got the different things happening. And that's where the demand right now is in commercial rather than retail or strip mall or large retail. Now, again, a master plan development for that north property has not yet been submitted. And if we get through this amendment tonight, along with the IR amendment, it will open the door for that to occur. So other amendments, just noteworthy in the specific plan itself, we did have to go through a lot of the text to get consistency and revise the graphics because the graphics were very specific to the tenants that were proposed. And then along with that, it's been so long that specific plan's been around now, 2010, 2011, 2012. It's a decade ago. Design standards have changed a little bit, so we've brought that up to speed a little bit as well. And then, of course, with the IR, the mitigation monitoring program, the project names had to be reflected in that. And of course, revised mitigation measures. So most importantly, we've had a lot of help from a traffic consultants and our public works team in evaluating traffic based on what we assume is going to develop here. The end result is that we found that the amendment does not make for more significant environmental impacts because the amendments do not make for more traffic at the intersection of Del Rio and El Camino Real and Highway 101. So what we propose to do is modify the project description and the mitigation measures to go along with that. Now, I think this next little section here is best described by Nick DeBar, our Public Works Director, because he loves to talk about trips and rates and numbers and, and all of those details. So keep us going on that, Nick, and I'm going to go through a couple of slides for you. And then I'm going to talk about some other stuff at the end. Thank you.
I like this traffic modeling as much as I like payment management. Actually, I love payment management. Anyways, there's a lot of tables here I wanted to get through. I'll be very brief and succinct as much as I can. But I think, as Phil mentioned, the big difference is the land use that is going to be happening out here. And we've looked at this a lot since Walmart decided to cancel their project. So this first slide is the land use and traffic impacts. This is existing impacts and land use and then plus future. So this table three on the upper right is some land use assumptions that's outside the specific plan but influences the interchange. So this would be the Del Rio intersection area. This includes the old dugout area and the Armet landscaping. So there's a gas station, a sit-down restaurant, retail pad, and fast food drive-through planned for there. And then also on the other side, the church property, as we call it. This analysis used six dwelling units to, to analyze the traffic impact. So total daily trips from these, this would be the future. Existing plus future would be 3,615. So in the bottom tables, table two on the left, show the existing intersection delays. So this is the worst delay in each. So an intersection at the first one, Del Rio and El Camino, there's four legs or four approaches to an intersection. So 23.5 seconds would relate to a level of service of a C. This is like grades in, in school. That is not the overall weighted, that is like the worst direction. So that's something to keep in mind because there's probably, the other three legs could be operating at an eight, but one might be operating at a C. I'm guessing that's the northbound. So you can see here, the existing PM peak hour intersection delays on the corridor are all very good. C or better. With the future, the table four to the right, this includes those land uses above. On top of that, so you can see Del Rio and El Camino. Actually, it, it goes down to a level of service E, which is unacceptable per our general plan. The other intersections are operating just fine. And again, I'll note that this is primarily the northbound direction. Northbound left turn onto Del Rio, westbound is the level of service impacts. Next slide, Phil. So on top of that, we looked at the specific plan land uses. So you have Annex West, Annex East, the Walmart site. The Walmart site has some assumptions here that are not a big-box retailer or heavy shopping, just like the Annex West is not, or sorry, the Annex East is now a business park with 190 square feet, 190,000 square feet of building space. Actually, the original EIR for the Del Rio specific plan, that Annex East actually generated more traffic than the Walmart site, believe it or not. So you can see this is a huge decrease from what was planned previously. So those total daily trips of those land uses from the, these are specific planner, 4,963. And then the corresponding AM and PM peak hour trips. So how does this impact the intersection delay? On the bottom left there, it shows that future, existing plus future is in that first column that we just looked at on the slide before. And actually, Del Rio and El Camino actually fail. So it gets a score of enough by a lot. I mean, there's, it almost doubles the delay time there. This is assuming no mitigations. Next slide, Phil. So here's So here's the mitigations that were analyzed in the traffic analysis. Mitigation one would be adding a westbound Del Rio to northbound 101 right turn lane. Mitigation two would be a traffic signal modifications to the Del Rio Road El Camino intersection. Remember, that was the one that was failing, the only one. And that would include a northbound and southbound left turn phasing. So this would be adding like a protected, which is a green arrow, which it is now. But adding, having that plus a permissive left, which would be a flashing like green arrow or just a green light. Then also a southbound right turn lane. Mitigation three that was analyzed had both of those improvements. Mitigation four would be, again, those M1 and M2 plus reconfiguring the eastbound Del Rio Road approach to El Camino. Right now, that actually operates as a shared left turn through and then a dedicated right turn. That would actually be changed to be a dedicated left turn with a shared through and a right turn. And then also the eastbound and westbound Del Rio approaches to the El Camino phasing, again, much like the protected plus permissive left turns. And then also the US 101 signal interconnection timing. So making sure those traffic signals on the the northbound and southbound ramp intersections on 101 are working in conjunction and as a system with the El Camino traffic signal. Next slide, Phil. So the amended specific plan, this is the impact of those various mitigations. So you can see in that table 11 on top, the future delay there, we remember that without any of the specific plan land uses was an E at Del Rio and El Camino. So no mitigation, remember doubled to an F. And then so if we add the M1 and analyze that with this traffic, actually, it doesn't do anything. You see, this is the westbound to northbound right turn pocket that we would add on Del Rio. That actually doesn't help at all with the traffic delay at El Camino-Del Rio interchange. M2 is a signal modifications that actually cuts it down a lot. You can see it goes from 182, 182 second delay to 46 second delay. So doing those signal improvements make a big difference. M3, when you combine those two, again, it doesn't do much more than what M2 does. And then M5, actually, this was a regional shopping center, so I apologize. Let me see here. I might have that one. Okay, this should have been an M4. But what M4 does, I can describe it to you. Grab the wrong. They all look the same after a while, so.
Oh, yeah. That's right. The charts look the same.
Is that table seven for us on page 188?
Yes. So table seven in your report on that page is actually, Del Rio-El Camino drops with mitigation four drops to 29.5 seconds, which corresponds to a C level. So.
Very good.
Exactly. But mitigation four, which would be adding the lane reconfigurations approaching El Camino. The other thing we look at is queuing. So, you know, how much does this back into through lanes and everything? So the table on the bottom there, again, it goes through what's in the first column, available storage, talks about how much, how many feet we have to store cars. So existing, we have plenty with exception to number three, Del Rio US 101 south ramps, the eastbound approach or the eastbound approach does not have enough queuing even right now. So again, no mitigation, mitigation one through four. You can see the only one that works acceptably with all enter, with all the queuing at each of these approaches is mitigation four. So if you include all those mitigations, you know, we can make this work without having to do roundabouts. Next slide, Phil. Again, as I mentioned, we also added this other land use where okay, what if Walmart, you know, does say, hey, we do actually want to build now, Phil, so we're back on. We actually analyzed that. And so you can see the Walmart site, there's a regional shopping center. This is exactly what they had proposed originally in the specific plan. So it's going to add a lot more daily trips, and those trips are going to be a lot different because shop people shop on the weekend a lot more. So this intersection actually failed on a Saturday originally in the specific plan, if I remember right. But table 11 on the bottom, again, we used those mitigations. Mitigation five, actually, was another mitigation that was added that included widening the Del Rio overpass bridge. You know, at some point in the future. So this bridge is currently was built in the 60s. At some point in the, probably the next 20 years, perhaps. Caltrans, 20 to 40 years, who knows? Caltrans will need to replace it. And I think at that point, you kind of look at, you know, seeing what the traffic is at that point. Who knows how we're going to be driving if we're flying around or what? So it's a big expense, but the other thing is if Walmart does decide to, hey, we do want to build that shopping center now, Phil, they'll have to mitigate the traffic from that. So you can see this is still an option, opportunity to work without the roundabouts in play, so we can do other things to mitigate traffic. Next slide, Phil. And again, the queuing, same thing, M5 bridge widening for the regional shopping center on top of the amended specific plan. It all works just fine with that additional mitigation. Next slide. So again, this is a little bit of phasing, how we would propose to phase this. And so if this item does get adopted tonight, what would happen would be, you know, we'd go after that second mitigation, number two, which is a signal modifications at El Camino and Del Rio. That gave us the acceptable, that gave us the biggest bang for the dollar. And honestly, it's the, probably one of the cheaper options that we have. So being able to do that, we do that first. And I would also probably add to that that we would, as development occurs, they have to do their frontage improvements. So as those frontage improvements are also being constructed with each development, the next item that's on the agenda, we'll talk about the plan line. Now go over that a little bit. The next phase that would occur would be really that right turn pocket, westbound and northbound 101, adding that right turn pocket and and as well doing mitigation number four, which is those Del Rio approach, remember, shifting the shared left through and dedicated right to a dedicated left and then a shared through right. And then doing also other signal modifications that accommodate that lane reconfiguration. I would, we would assume that those things would happen together with a right turn pocket because you're going to need to get a Caltrans encroachment permit. You're going to have to go through that whole process. You're already widening the road at that point as well. So you know, and this would, this would allow the trigger for this would be when it generates more than 134 PM peak hour trips. So that first item can be done pretty easily. And actually, all three corners, both Annex East, Annex West, and the Walmart site all need to relocate the traffic signal on their corners. So when those developments come in, they'll be mitigated to do that as part of their frontage improvements. And at that time, we'll make sure that the mast arms on those traffic signals are long enough to accommodate all these additional improvements to the signal. This is just a layout of the intersection and corridor. Next slide, Phil.
That's kind of how, a few months ago, before the hotel was done. So this all the work we're talking about occurs right in this zone. I just have that slide in there just for perspective, Nick.
Yeah, that's great. It's going to look quite different, I'm sure, in the next couple of years. So this actually is a part of the plan line in the next item. But it kind of shows what we were talking about, adding that right turn pocket on the top of the sheet. So north is upwards, more or less. El Camino is up and down on your right. Del Rio is left to right. And then the US 101 is on the left side of this drawing, the on-ramp. So you can see kind of the work that would be needed. Actually, on the, on the property just to the north here, there's some right-of-way that we would need to acquire as well as an easement. There's a retaining wall that would need to be built. You know, it's proposed that when this drive-through restaurant occurs, that maybe they end up building part of that retaining wall just to lessen the impacts in the future when this right turn pocket would need to occur. And then you can also see eastbound on Del Rio, that dedicated left and then the shared through right. So changing it up a little bit. And then southbound El Camino, that dedicated right turn right in front of the drive-through restaurant is the other one. So. Next slide, Phil.
What's good about this particular slide, before I leave it, if you look real careful, you can see the edge of the road underneath the graphic there and kind of give an idea of how much widening would have to occur at that corner. It's kind of an interesting perspective.
The other, the other, can you go right back to that for a second? One more comment. That brown area, that's in between the pavement edge and the retaining wall, that's shown as a black line with some dots on it. That actually would be needed for a bridge, future bridge widening. So, you know, you figure you build the wall one time and then you don't ever have to inconvenience the property owners. We don't have to get right-of-way. It's just, you know, master planning for anything in the future that might, you know, we might have to do with that mitigation number five with the bridge widening.
The other thing we should point out here too, Nick, is the amount of land that would have been needed on the northeast side for the roundabout, which would have extended far into this northeast property at the corner. So very significant land savings for the private properties by changing this traffic plan.
Yeah, much, much simpler, more traditional design, honestly, but it still works very well.
And this last one, I'll let you talk about this still too, Nick, but the reality here is that this is not in our immediate future. This is a what-if. This is if we do experience a very significant traffic demanding land use, the option's still there but is not in the current plan in terms of being able to finance this or do this as part of the shared costs for mitigation. But go ahead and talk about that one, Nick, too.
Yeah, this, this would be, you know, when trips exceed 293 trips per hour PM peak hour. This is the Walmart, you know, scenario if they were to build their store, more or less, or, you know, let's say, you know, the fishing just, you know, bass become humongous in the Tascadero Lake and also Bass Pro Shops finds out and they want to build over there instead. So which would be great, right? Anyway, this, this is like a future project if we would need it. Some hail mary scenario like that, or, you know, if we're really getting sketchy with some of the the queuing or the delays at some point in the future when Caltrans decides to replace that bridge, this gives us an option to potentially widen the bridge and piggyback on that project and save a lot of money, quite frankly. So.
And again, it's more of the engineering side drawing, but I think the previous drawing you had showed this much better. I don't know that we need to spend a lot of time looking at that graphic. Maybe I'll talk about these responsibilities and in terms of that mitigation. What's important to note is that you can do some development in the specific plan with the very first phase, which is the signal re-timing phasing, which in my layman's terms, I equate that to going over to the traffic control box, opening the box up and reprogramming some wires in there without doing a lot of physical work on the roof. Is that accurate, Nick?
It's a generality, but okay.
Okay, all right. So that would allow some development. That's the phase one, or otherwise known as M2. But then the other portion is the phase two, which is actually the physical improvements, the lane changes, the widening, the retaining wall. That is the one item combined with the first item there that we would develop a fair share cost for, for development that wants to come forward. But let's say we don't need the development yet. They would pay their fair share, or they would have the option of building that improvement and entering into a reimbursement agreement. Now, what's important to keep in mind with all of these things is that the specific plan itself isn't 100% responsible for all of the traffic improvement costs because they're sharing this intersection with other land uses that are already approved by our general plan that can move forward today. So what we've developed in this specific plan is we've had to determine what's their share of responsibility based on the other traffic that's coming through here. And roughly today, based on today's assumptions, it's about 38%. So when we talk about fair share payments and we talk about the cost of doing these improvements, it's only a portion of the cost of those improvements that development in a specific plan would be responsible for. The other interesting piece here is that some of those improvements are already assumed by our traffic impact fees. So then they get credits back for that. But in the end, what I can tell you is that the cost of development and the cost of the impact fees for traffic is far less expensive than it was with the original specific plan, and that's the key thing. Now, we do have things built in. The future should cost escalate and development comes in later, we'll have to look at that at that particular time. So this doesn't lock in the costs, this doesn't lock in the fees. What it locks in is the formula. So that we can look at that later on as development comes in and not be left with insufficient funds to do those improvements. So the next steps. What are the next steps? Tonight, if we get through this particular amendment discussion, we'll also move on to talk about what land we need to do the improvements. And that's the plan line to make sure we have adequate right-of-way for those improvements. And then if we're successful with the specific plan amendment, again, we open the door to inviting applicants to come forward with a new master plan of development for each of the sites. They will come through to the city, apply for that, and that's when we would assign specific project conditions and mitigation measures to them, and then they can move forward with construction permits. That's the green light to go. So in conclusion, like I've used the term several times tonight, proposed amendments open the door. Right now, that door is closed for development in a specific plan, and we would see commercial development that responds to this changing retail environment. This area is a very significant piece of the city's potential. It has the opportunity and potential to really enhance our jobs and housing balance. It can really help our economic situation in Tascadero, really also helping infrastructure, broadening our tax base, and hopefully being a location where we can secure some head of household jobs to support the large amounts of housing that we're seeing moving forward in our city and that the state's mandating that we build. Really, what we're looking at is really helping to balance our jobs and housing imbalance that we currently have in our community and seeing this specific plan as part of that solution. So we believe as staff, those amendments will help get us there and help get us there more expeditiously in the future. So the recommendation tonight that we're going to leave you with is to adopt a draft resolution that would approve an addendum to the previously certified EIR for the Del Rio Commercial Area Specific Plan. and then introducing an ordinance, amending the Del Rio Commercial Area Specific Plan. It was adopted by ordinance originally, which would amend land uses, the project descriptions, general and the general definitions. Now, there is a couple of things I did want to introduce to you that were brought to our attention that we'll want to look at more carefully. One of those is one of the findings. That is on page.
Page 146, I think.
146, thank you. Yes, it is. Of your staff report, there's a finding there that is more related to the prior specific plan in terms of responding to a commercial store and responding to also energy efficiency and some of the things that are already taken care of by our recent building code update. So instead, staff is suggesting replacing that with something along the lines of what you have on your screen, which is that the proposed specific plan amendments will support the creation of head of household jobs in the city adjacent to existing residential areas with the potential for reducing vehicle miles traveled, otherwise known as VMT, and that the amendments will allow for the efficient and complementary uses of land with a mix of commercial, business park, and residential uses to serve existing and future residents and helping the city's imbalance of jobs and housing. So that's a suggested language for that particular finding. But at this point, I'd be happy to answer your questions. I also do have lists of the land uses that I can bring up on slides. Should we want to get into the land use discussion more specifically to talk about what's allowed under the specific plan, what's conditionally allowed, and what is recommended to be prohibited in that specific plan. Keep in mind, the underlying zoning of this area is retail-commercial and everything that's allowed in that commercial retail zone in our regular zoning regulations is also allowed in the specific plan. But we can customize that list as we see fit, as long as it's consistent with the general plan of the city. And we can talk about that a little later. But at this point, I'm going to break and be open for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you both directors.
Steve Weinberger, who is our traffic consultant, is also available. He's tuned in and he can answer any question, more specific questions that you may have.
Thank you. Okay. I will say, I think if we listen carefully, we can hear a collective sigh of relief throughout Tascadero that roundabouts are no longer going to be at Del Rio. I think everyone's pretty excited about that. But both of you, thank you very much into your departments. There, a lot of work has gone into this over the last, well, many years, but specifically amending this specific plan the last year, working closely, of course, with our traffic engineers, with the property owner and really the surrounding area to bring about what we as a council have said is a priority of ours. So thank you for your, for your hard work and your dedication to this, and it's really nice to see this coming to fruition tonight. So I think I saw a hand from Councilmember Fonzie. We will start with questions on your end.
Thank you, and thank you to staff for listening to the council. We brought this to you with the drive-throughs and it just kind of morphed into something new. So I think we've really done well and I appreciate the hard work on this. I did have a question about how do we get the businesses that are coming in? This would be the drive-through restaurant in particular to work with us regarding the right-of-way expansion, retaining walls and that kind of thing.
Part of that is already going to happen because of the fact that when that corner property is developed with the drive-through restaurant outside the specific plan, which is, I believe, what you're asking about there, they're responsible for their own frontage improvements, which includes building the corner and building the curb and gutter and sidewalk. And they do have to do site grading. So it's possible that in conjunction with that project, they may also wish to do part of these improvements as it extends into the property and that will need to acquire some of that property. So there could be some work that occurs with that at the same time, since the same property owner that owns that also owns a large portion of the northern part of the specific plan. So we're working on that and to see whether that can all work together at the same time so we can get some more expeditious work to happen on that. Do you have anything else to add on that, Nick, at all?
Yeah, you, you know, some of those common improvements that in the packet, there was kind of a fair share cost breakdown of what, you know, it came down to how many, you know, per daily trip, you know, a cost per daily trip. And those, the total costs that went into determining that, the project, if you will, would have been that retaining or the right-turn pocket westbound and northbound, the signal modifications and all those things that included, you know, up to mitigation four, mitigation one, two, and four, I guess, if you will. So that's what would be involved in it. The traffic signal on the northeast, northwest, and southeast corner would be done by developers because they already have to relocate them with a frontage improvement. So that's already being taken care of. That retaining wall in particular on the north side of Del Rio, between El Camino and the northbound ramp. You know, if that was something that, you know, we, we've been talking to the developer about that a little bit and we'd need to get, get some right-of-way from them for that and also an easement for maintenance easement on the wall. But if they were to pursue, I would say, building that wall because it is so close to the drive-through and some other things that they could be eligible for a credit for the oversized improvements with that. So maybe they don't, what they, the cost to do those improvements that are part of the bigger mitigation one, two, and four, you know, they could get a credit from or, you know, have their impact fees reduced.
Great. It sounds like we can work with them and then give them some consideration for working with us then.
Yes.
Very good. And this would be a land use question, Phil. You mentioned that the Planning Commission had talked about an RV park area. Could you show us on the map where that would be proposed or where the applicant that talked about this was thinking it would go?
Yes, let me refer back to that map that we have of the whole specific plan area. Any intent is that it's on the south, I'll call it the southeast quadrant. So if I look at this map, let's see, actually, this map's the best map to look at here. So here's the southeast quadrant. That's a former Walmart site. And part of that is zone residential and the rest of it's zone retail. But a lot of it actually has some pretty substantial slope on it as well. And when they went to do the original geological investigations on this site, when they were going to grade the entire site out, they also found out that there's a lot of groundwater and a lot of deepwatering. So it may be a challenge to develop the upper site. So the current buyer of the property did chime in to the Planning Commission and they felt that perhaps on a small portion of the site, there could be some RV lodging that could be done in conjunction with other commercial development, other visitor-serving development on the site. And I think at that time at the Planning Commission, they came up with some basically findings that said that in certain circumstances, with a conditional use permit, with a master plan of development, that that may be okay on a portion of that site. Now, through tonight's deliberation, we can further refine those findings from a location perspective or from a phasing perspective, or whatever you like on that particular recommendation from the commission.
Okay, so does an RV park have a lot of vehicle miles traveled or is it an intensive use? I don't think that is a gas station or a drive-through.
No. So people coming once during the day, they may drive their car out that they have that they're towing in to go get food somewhere in the city and then come back. But it's typically, you know, I would say between two and four trips a day per site. And let's say you've got 10, 15, 20 sites. Even if you have 30 sites, it's very, very low and it's typically very spread out and doesn't have a peak hour like a retail store or a gas station or a, another use that might have a whole bunch of folks coming in at one time and going out at one time. So it's, it's very low intensive, but it can also be very land-consuming in terms of area. So it's something you have to carefully consider. It might be something that really is good for a tourist-serving use, but at the same time, the grand vision of the specific plan is also to have these head of household jobs and commercial development. So balancing the two needs is kind of critical.
And would that be, land use be allowed in retail-commercial zoning?
Typically not.
Okay, so what would that require if we were to go down that route? General plan amendment, COP?
We can actually do that with a specific plan, and here's why. Is our general plan has broad categories for its land use districts. And one of those categories is called general retail. And that category is further broken down into commercial tourist and commercial retail and commercial service. So in a specific plan, as long as you're consistent with the general plan for the commercial designation, you can take these land uses from the other components that are within the CT zone, a commercial tourist zone, of a CR zone, and customize your specific plan with it. So the city council is allowed to add that land use as a conditionally allowed use, even though it's not normally allowed in the commercial retail zone. It's still allowed under the general plan designation of that district, if that makes any sense. Were they talking too much planner language?
No, you're fine, Phil. That's fine. Okay, so if we were to consider it, could we state that we would consider it, but this isn't something we're putting in right now? Or how would we do this? We just don't have enough information at this point in time to make that kind of decision.
Sure, a couple of things. Now, first of all, if we get through this specific plan amendment tonight, it doesn't mean that someone can come in and build something right away. They have to come into the city with a master plan of development, which goes from the Design Review Committee to the Planning Commission, and then it gets conditions assigned to it. But you can also add basically findings or you can add specifics to each land use. So you can say that, hey, if we're going to allow RV lodging, it's only allowed on this portion of this site with this sort of phasing plan, and it has to be Phase 4 of a four-phase development that also includes the following other land uses that need to be occupied prior to that land use. Hypothetically, I mean, there's different ways you can do that, to have it be a later phase of commercial development. Or that it's, you know, reviewed consistent with an overall master plan of development to be approved by the city council, for example. At that time, you could, you could approve a phasing plan for it. So there's a lot of different things you can do to kind of control land use along those lines within certain limitations.
Got it. Thank you, Bill.
Mayor Potembe or both?
Thank you. I had to remember to unmute myself. So first of all, on page 131, we, this is a question for Phil. You make mention of near the bottom, all site-specific entitlements for the former Walmart site will remain within the approved master plan of development until expiration or until a new development plan is submitted. And, you know, I'm really concerned here just because we, in 2012, I think, city council built a box by being so excited about getting Walmart, and I understand why. But, you know, by letting them go first, we created this box that's been hard to get out of. So if I'm a company looking at buying Walmart's site, what does that mean for me? Because elsewhere in the report, we indicate that Walmart's parcel map has expired in July 2020. What does it mean in terms of the entitlements of a purchaser of the property? If somebody bought it today, what can they do of the old plan versus submitting a whole new master plan?
Nothing. So it's kind of a mute point because the master plan has expired already in July of this year. They would need to apply to the city with a new master plan of development showing what they want to develop, what their phasing is and what their design is and what their land uses are. And that would have to come before us for approval for consistency with the EIR and the specific plan. And so we have full discretion on that particular topic at that particular time. So it's a bit of, I think, the way that's written there is, is the idea is there were things that were approved and they've now expired. And we've got to go through that as a review process anyway.
What confuses me is the wording saying all site-specific entitlements of the former Wall site, Walmart site will remain. And then the next sentence says all specific development requirements for the former annex site will remain within the approved master plan of development until it is amended. So it's kind of like saying Walmart gets to keep their entitlements and the annex gets to keep their requirements. And, but are you really telling me that since the map has expired that both parties simply have to come in with a new master plan of development?
Yes, they do. We actually started writing this staff report and putting these together before the master plans development had expired. But now they have expired. The intent was to make those particular areas more flexible, but now it doesn't matter because the specific plans have officially, not specific plans, the master plans of development have officially expired along with the subdivision maps for each of the properties. So. Yeah, that's it. That's where we are today.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. I just want to make sure about that. So on page 134, and you mentioned in Phase 3, which would be reconstructing the Del Rio Overpass to accommodate bridge widening. Essentially, nothing we envisioned at this point would actually require that. But our long-run hope is that someday the bridge gets sold, that Caltrans voluntarily replaces the whole thing. Is that what we're saying? Okay, okay, got it. Then, you know, we, we are talking about the specific plan area, which is all on the east side of the freeway. And of course, we have significant consideration of what happens on the west side of the freeway. So anything that happens on the west side of the freeway in terms of general plan amendment and additional development, will, that would produce additional traffic? And if I understand you guys correctly, even adding anything of that would still be less than the original traffic envisioned in the specific plan area?
Yes, in terms of its access to the Del Rio Overpass, yes. And the main reason for that is because on the other side of the freeway, you don't have an arterial road paralleling the freeway. Instead, you go, you travel east on Del Rio and the only place you're going to go is either onto the freeway or you're going to go back over to El Camino. But you're not going to add a significant amount of traffic at the problematic intersection of Del Rio and El Camino Real. Additionally, we do have to do some additional later analysis. We had to assume for now, for our current traffic analysis, that the big area across the freeway is still zone rural residential and can allow six or eight residential units. If a development comes in over there, which we are anticipating, and that's the development that the city council authorized to proceed, it will have to proceed with its own independent traffic analysis and review. And at that time, there will be amendments needed on the west side. But we believe that the traffic improvements that we're envisioning now with this specific plan amendment will help facilitate and preserve room and preserve right-of-way for those improvements as well. Although on the west side, there will be their own independent improvements and realignments and things that will need to happen to ensure traffic flows on and off Highway 101 without delay.
I understand they would have site-specific improvements on their side of the freeway, but they would contribute some traffic, you know, coming over to and from El Camino, and they would pay regular traffic impact fees. But would they also pay for some of these specific mitigation measures or just regular transportation improvement fees that would contribute to this?
We would have to take a look at that based on the land use plan that they proposed at the time. But I, it's my understanding that it may contribute to that as well and be part of that equation. And they may want to be a part of the Del Rio specific plan and could help out with a fair share, thereby reducing the cost of improvements for everybody else as we move forward and contributing to the earlier development of those improvements as needed.
Okay, thank you. At the bottom of page 138, and this is more of a, maybe more of a question for Mr. DeBar as Public Works, we talk about the $4.6 million estimate. And that just had an eerie familiarity for me because in 2012, the estimate for, you know, the, the roundabouts at Freeway Interchange and the whole nine yards was $4.6 million, only to have it 18 months later become $11 million. So I'm wondering who this time did the estimates? How can, and how much confidence should we place in them? What I want to understand is why, or are you confident in these estimates? And if so, why? And how do we avoid a rude awakening 18 months from now like happened after 2012?
Sure. Well, first, right off the get-go, I started in December of 2014, so well after 2012. Sure. Well, first, right off the get-go, I started in December of 2014, so well after 2012. And that mistake had already kind of been found out before I even got here. We actually had Wallace Group, and we'll go through that in the next item, actually. I could talk about that a little bit more. But they actually put together a very detailed cost estimate. They actually are the ones that were working our roundabout design and found that mistake with elevation and some other things as well, cost escalation. But that's actually an escalation factor on top of that. So that's assuming like a 2022 construction timeframe, that 4.6 million. On the west side of the freeway, that does not include, that'll be an additional cost on top of the 4.6. So that's probably more like around 3 million on the other side to widen the road and kind of get those things squared away as well.
I think the key question now is, last time is part of the deal, you know, and I think the second error that was made was to cap the contribution at the time by Walmart. And so what I'm wondering is, you know, we have these cost estimates, you know, and we have a percentage share for the properties inside the specific plan area. If the estimates prove to be off, or something else is required by Caltrans or something else, are we going to adjust the fees, you know, charged to the property developers in this particular area?
Yeah, so that'll be determined at the time of the master plan of development. So when that happens, we'll make sure we have a current cost estimate. It's very likely that we'll be working to make these improvements anyways. So we're always going to be updating those cost estimates. We do that on a regular basis right now and report back to Caltrans. So that'll, we'll make sure that an updated cost estimate is in place at the time of the developer agreement to make sure that they're for sure. And the other thing too, it's like, you know, it's quite, it's quite likely, maybe not likely, but it could occur where maybe it's not 190,000 square feet of business park on the annex East. Maybe they have a restaurant that comes in there or something else. So maybe those assumed trips change a little bit. And then what we'll require is that, you know, another traffic analysis that they do and perform to make sure that all these things are still working and we're not, you know, we're monitoring the traffic from the developments that could propose prior to approving them and making sure that the costs are being covered.
Thank you. Next question is for Mr. Dunsmore on page 139. I think you started to address this with Councilmember Fonzie's question. Says in the middle of next steps, "A project that includes a subdivision map that includes five or more lots will also require review by the city council." You kind of indicated in answering Councilmember Fonzie's question that something could come back to the city council. But I think you're alluding that it would not necessarily come back to the city council under our current procedures once there is an approved master plan of development. And so what I'm wondering here is if we could, I mean, I'm assuming that, given the importance of these projects to the future of the city, that this council and future councils would want to see that. And is that something that we should put into this now that the council will review these projects on, at this major, you know, area of interest to us?
That's entirely at your pleasure. The way the specific plan is written today is that a master plan of development, a new one, is reviewed by the planning commission. But when this specific plan was first adopted, we did do everything at the city council. And the reason for that is we had everything one time, the EIR, the specific plan, and the master plans of development. So we haven't been in a position where we've been faced with having to look at new master plans of development with this specific plan. So it's perfectly okay to designate that review level to the city council for new master plans of development in this specific plan. And that's something that we would want to write into the specific plan language with this amendment. Or, like I said, it's possible, very likely, that there could be tentative track maps that come to the city council anyway. But it's probably better assurance that you put the language in there if you do want to have a review opportunity for the master plans of development rather than the planning commission.
Right, because if I understand it, what you're saying is that if you had a single buyer of all the Walmart parcels, they could come up with a master plan development, goes to design review and planning commission, and never come back to the city council. And I just think, you know, it's significant enough that the city council would want to see that. And so it sounds like we need to make that, or I would suggest in a way, we include that in our language tonight. Okay, then, we talked, you know, I think Mr. DeBar alluded the fact that somebody might come in with something, let's say, smaller than requested than suggested in these plans. If an individual property owner here came in and wanted to build, let's say, an even larger office park or something else that was, you know, slightly, it changed the traffic count. It would be higher for a singular component, but maybe not the overall thing. Would they have to revisit a whole traffic study? And, you know, what other additional mitigation factors might have to be done?
Not necessarily, but it may preclude other development that could occur in other parts of the specific plan. It's basically a first-come, first-served scenario. So if one of the property owners comes in with something more substantial, but it still is able to be mitigated based on our current phasing plan of traffic improvements, that can proceed forward. But then it just means later on down the line, as other development wants to occur, it may be precluded. But if the development that they're proposing is very significant, very different, certainly we would want to do additional traffic analysis if it's far outside the window of our assumptions.
All right, thank you. Hey, and on page 248 and page 364, there's a map that says, it talks about reciprocal access between the northernmost parcel in the specific plan area on the east side of Del Rio. And I think on this map you have on the screen and the parcel that would be just north of the red line. So in other words, there's a commercially zoned parcel that's just outside the specific plan area. That's commercially zoned. I don't know what's intended or what that is. Well, kind of zone, it's commercial retail or not. But was that, were the uses of that property at all considered in this?
Yes, and luckily, that parcel is now mutually owned by the same property owner in the specific plan. And from what I understand, he intends to develop that in conjunction with very similar land uses, even though it's outside the specific plan. So that would essentially bump up the commercial business part from 190 to 210. And it would access it as one development plan, even though that parcel's outside the specific plan. So, you know, for all intents and purposes, it's part of the same commercial development, even though it's outside of the boundary. We did not adjust the boundary with this amendment because once you adjust the boundary of the specific plan and you bring in more development, that's going to increase your overall traffic impacts inside the bubble and increase the impacts for your EIR, which is what you don't want to do. So that's a bit of a challenge. So we kind of left that alone. And we haven't, we've kept silent on that topic, but it is under the same ownership and is likely to develop in the same pattern. I think you're on mute.
It's good it's same ownership, but you're outside the specific plan.
Charles, I think your internet might be unstable. Luke, can you turn off his camera and see if that doesn't help with the stability issue? Maybe we'll be able to hear.
Yes, we can give that a shot. He is currently offline, so his connection fully dropped for the time being.
Okay, okay. If somebody has his phone number, you may want to text him if he has his phone, and we can try to get him to call in as well, might be best.
Yeah, I'm lost.
The same number that I called in on?
I don't know if we each have individual phone numbers or not. I'm not sure. Luke, could you tell us that is that the same number that both Susan and I have called in on and the access code and everything? Can we, is it the same one that all the few?
Correct. The initial call-in number will be the same for everybody.
Okay, but what about the access code?
Screen now.
Everybody has their own individual access code, and it sounds like Charles is connecting right now. His audio is locked on.
Yeah, I heard him.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Charles.
Okay, because I can't see me, so I can't tell. All right, and so that is to say that somebody owning property outside the specific plan area could build a more traffic-intensive use. Is that correct?
As long as it's consistent with the zoning and general plan, we have no control over, yeah, the intensity. So very similar example, the gas station that was approved across the street, next to the hotel, and the drive-through fast food restaurant that's also approved there. So those assumptions are assumptions we've already taken into our traffic analysis. When we did the analysis, we looked at what can be built within the scope of the general plan, within the scope of the zoning outside the specific plan, and ran those to the max. And so if those develop as less intensive uses, we'll actually end up with a surplus here. And, you know, we'll actually be in better shape than what we're seeing. So what we give you in these numbers is a traffic engineer's dream. It's a worst-case scenario, or a traffic engineer's nightmare, should I say, right, Steve?
All right.
Thank you, and I think it's all the way through, so.
Thank you. Okay, on page 375, there's a list of allowed uses. And then on page 376, I guess, there's a list of prohibited uses. On page 375, the first thing listed is auto repair. And that kind of surprised me, and I wasn't sure if that was a leftover of anticipating that Walmart would have like a tire operation or something. It seemed that auto repair seemed a little out of place with what we're trying to accomplish here.
That actually was intentional. The idea there is you've got a new commercial development, and the types of auto repair, when we look at auto repair, we also think about what if we were to get a Tesla service center where they did the reprogramming? We're thinking of a brand-new complex and a brand-new building and a brand-new development, not the same kind of auto repair you're familiar with, maybe in other locations in our community, where you have a very, you know, outdated building or outdated land use and outdated improvements, but something a little different. So that is intentional, that is in there, it wasn't there originally, but it's modified a little bit. And again, that particular item, that's at the council's pleasure if that's appropriate or not in the specific plan. Again, we did notate a staff that that would be indoor only and no outdoor storage of inoperative vehicles, no outdoor use at all. As an indoor use, it might be something that is, you know, associated with automotive sales as well or something along the lines of something that does produce jobs in that location.
Great, thank you. Great answer. That's why we pay you to be creative and thinking ahead of the kind of possible uses. But I'm wondering if it should be a conditional use, you know? In other words, sure, indoor fancy Tesla thing, great, you know, greasy car shop, no.
Certainly that could be shifted over to conditional uses. There's no issue with doing that.
Okay, and then on page 379, I was just confused. It talks about the residential multifamily zone, the property at the far southeast corner of the Walmart site. Talks about it was 12, and it was rezoned to 16, and rezoned to 24, and then it says therefore it's 12.
Yes, it does say 16. Apologize for that typographical error.
Okay.
Citywide, we have rezoned the high-density multifamily zone to 24 units an acre. And 24 is what we have to assume on this, consistent with our housing elements. So that's a typo.
Okay, and then you, in answer to Councilmember Fonzie's question, I think you alluded to that if we allowed RV park there, we could, as part of the master plan of development, limit it, let's say, to the back of the property, et cetera. So it's not front and center on El Camino Real, something like that, but.
That's correct. You can put any kind of occupational criteria on there you wish, or performance criteria.
Okay, and then I have a map question I think we'll wait till the next item. So thank you much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Funk, I no longer see your video. Are you still with us?
Yes, I'm with you, and I just discovered in trying to get hold of a phone number for Mayor Protem Borbo, I evidently took myself off camera, but I have definitely been here the whole time. Okay, yes, I do have some questions. And pardon me, you're going to hear my papers moving around as I go through my little yellow stickies that I always put on these major reports. Okay, so one of the issues, part of what I'm going to focus on are issues about how do we protect ourselves as a city on this very strategic property that we have invested a lot in collectively over a large number of years in this site, in this specific plan, precisely because this is the single largest commercial property available in the city. It's a real, the whole area is strategic for the future of our city. And so I want to make sure that we're preserving all of the things against things that we hope won't happen but might. And that includes ending up with having more traffic, enough traffic that we have to widen that road. Has every step been taken to preserve the properties that would be needed if the overpass had to be widened so that additional property wouldn't have to be condemned or interfere with the developments outlined in this plan?
Yes, yep. And the next item, actually, the plan line that the council will consider approving. Actually, the plan line is actually not only the geometric layout of the roadway, but it also identifies those areas of private property, that's private property right now, that we will need to obtain as right-of-way or easements or other matters to do that. Yes, we looked at this quite extensively with Wallace Group, what would be needed and the approaches to the bridge widening and everything else. I mentioned earlier during the presentation, there was that, on the one map, it has that brown area between the retaining wall and the edge of the pavement. That's one of the areas that we would obtain as right-of-way for that purpose in the future.
When, okay, thank you. That's very reassuring. In the traffic signal adjustments and things that occur in that area, to the extent to which we're digging up road and changing electrical conduit and connections, can the city take any steps to ensure that fiber optic conduit is laid or anything that might facilitate competition in high-speed internet or high-speed internet support, both for the residents, the businesses in that development and also for residents and others?
Sure, yeah, we can certainly include conduits, you know, empty or dry conduits in the project. The other thing we do too is, you know, Charter and AT&amp;T are both very motivated. When there's going to be a lot of development like this, I mean, that, you know, the annex East, for instance, could be, you know, there could be some real high-tech businesses in there that really need a good, solid, fast internet connection. And so we would work with them, and hopefully they are motivated to get more new customers, you know, business customers in particular. So we often will talk with Charter and AT&amp;T and try to see if they want to do a project to serve a lot of these uses. So if the city doesn't need to put in a dry conduit and let the private sector do it, that's great. We would, I think we would rather have them do that. We just, we don't want to be a competition with Charter and AT&amp;T, I don't think. But we do want to be a catalyst to have those things in place that make it much more easier and less costly to put those pipes and conduits in the ground.
Precisely. Do it when you're already tearing up streets so that the cost is the cheapest and we are maximizing the opportunity for that key aspect of future business development. and we are maximizing the opportunity for that key aspect of future business development. Okay, another question, this is a Phil question. For the environmental impact report, if a later project came along and let's say they're going to have more traffic than is currently assumed in this, in this thing for that, in this version of the plan for that site, but less traffic than the Walmart's version, the 2012 version originally projected, would they be able to, again, bring to us an amendment to this EIR? Or do they have to start a new EIR process?
Yes, you could still do an addendum similar to what we're doing now, would be no different. And in fact, we've already assumed that there could be a high traffic generating use based on the final mitigation that we have out here, which is the M five. So that's already there. So, yeah, there's no issue with doing that.
Okay, great. Now, a couple of questions about the traffic, the traffic trips numbers, if our traffic consultant's still around. I was trying to understand that the, the large properties that are part of this specific plan are currently expected, I'm looking on page one thirty eight, expected to generate thirty eight point seven percent of the area traffic impact. And the rest of the general plan build out is sixty one percent. What, which is, you know, the rest of that, how much of that sixty one percent, how much of that is coming from the uses we know about that are proposed for properties that are in this area but aren't part of the specific plan? I'm referring specifically to the Taco Bell that's mentioned in these documents and also to the fuel station, gas station, electric charging station that's mentioned in these documents.
Can you give me the page number again, please?
I'm looking at page one thirty eight. In the second paragraph of that, it talks about the specific plan that those, that these areas are thirty eight point seven percent of the area traffic impact.
I'm wondering if, Phil, I think you may have written the part about the percentages, so what tables are you referring to there?
Yeah, so I think, I think there's two different things here. So what Steve Weinberger did is actually, he'll need to refer to some of the attachments that we have in the report rather than page one thirty eight, because what we did, what we gave Steve, our traffic consultant, was a set of hypothetical land uses in addition to what we anticipate to build around this intersection, which included the Taco Bell and the gas station. We can pull up probably one of those charts, which is in the back of the report. What it essentially show you is that the fuel station and the Taco Bell alone were a very significant number of trips that heavily contribute to the trip at the corner of El Camino Real and Del Rio. In fact, those two land uses were more than the entire business park development proposal altogether, alone. So if that, you know, kind of helps answer that question. But I think we can more specifically look at those trip numbers. For example, maybe a question for Steve would be, you know, I think we had a, what is it, 12 pump gas station proposed there along with a car wash and a convenience store, for example, is how many trips approximately according to IT? Do you have that number, Steve?
If that's in our, the anticipated development, the table three of our report.
Yes.
Yeah, because they, yeah, the gas station and the fast food generates the majority of the traffic of those properties outside the specific line area or the anticipated development. Phil, why don't, Phil, one of the first slides I talked about, they, it actually had a land use. Right. Presentation, if we want to go to that. And I think the other, the other thirty eight percent, or that item that Councilmember Funk was talking about is that the last attachment to your report was actually prepared by RCS, who does our traffic development impact fee studies. But you can see that's where I think that thirty eight percent and those, thirty eight point seven percent was generated and the fair share cost analysis was performed.
So there we go, two thousand four hundred and sixty four daily trips from a gas station. This number in this chart, that compared to, if I move on, let's see, business park was two thousand three hundred and sixty four for a hundred and ninety thousand square feet of business park compared to two thousand, so more trips in a single gas station than a hundred and ninety thousand square feet of business park. Good comparison, really, when you look at those, those relationships.
Right.
I would prop, I was going to say, I would, I would focus for the traffic impacts, you want to focus more on that total peak hour number, the PM peak trips, that column, which is the third to the last column. So right there, that's the column you want to focus on in terms of traffic operational impacts. So, yeah.
Well, yeah, in terms of the delays and things versus the overall wear and tear on the infrastructure, yeah.
Which is also an issue based on more daily traffic. So the gas station use has both of those. It has a large number of daily trips. It also has a large number of peak hour trips that are impacting operations during that peak hour.
Okay, so if I'm looking at, now I'm back to page one hundred and thirty nine of the report in the second full paragraph there, I'm looking at the cost, there's an impact fee per vehicle trip of four hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty four cents that include, that is mentioned for, that applies to the projects that are in the specific plan, right? And it's my understanding that that is a one-time fee that is based on the numbers that we basically see before us in terms of daily vehicle trips that that facility would generate. So the fee is.
That is correct.
Daily trips, but the concern, the trip point for needing to do additional mitigation would be based on those PM peak trips, right?
That is correct. Staff and a consultant had a long discussion on PM peak hour trips versus daily trips. And for the impacts overall, that daily trips number was felt to be a better number and more consistent with the way our development impact fees are assessed. It is also an easier number to get to when you're trying to do it. We don't have to hire a traffic analysis to figure out when are those PM peak trips? When are they hitting that, when aren't they? Those are available through the IT manual and other places. So we assess the fee based on daily trips.
Okay, so which is, so that's more efficient and easier for developers to know what they're getting into in a project?
That is correct, and it will save them a little bit of money upfront in that they won't have to do a traffic analysis.
Right, that's the efficiency piece. Okay, and am I correct in the, the language in the report on page one thirty nine indicates that that four hundred and sixteen thirty four is in addition to the citywide impact fee?
And that, that isn't. That is an error. It is not in addition to, that is the total net fee.
Okay, so a usage like the business park is going to, on a one-time basis, pay that four hundred and sixteen dollars times the twenty three hundred and some trips per day? And that would be their fee for this, for the traffic impact? Okay, and the other citywide impact fees? Then for the gas station, which was not part of this, their fee structure is not based on this, right? Can you tell us what the, what that, that gas station development would have to pay?
So that gas station development pays our regular commercial impact fees. You have since changed this policy, but that is based on the square feet of the building. It runs around eleven dollars and I want to say fifty eight cents per square foot. So if they had a thousand square foot building, they'd be looking at paying eleven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, even though their impact is tremendously larger than that. And that is why we brought this to the council last fall and said, hey, we need to start charging based on a clause in our fee study that did say that if the number of trips is substantially higher than, or lower than the average for commercial development, that we should use this alternate formula. And so we're doing that on a prospectus basis.
But the, but the reason that we are stuck in this position with the fast food joint and the gas station in this area is because they were in process at the time, before, at the time that the council acted on those fees, is that true?
They were either in process or approved at that time, correct.
Okay, yeah. The point being, when we, when there are things that we miss about our long-term potential impact, we get ourselves into a hole that is really unfortunate, where it, we see something that's a very unfair distribution of costs relative to the actual impact. And this is part of being stuck in a city with a twenty year old general plan. So as we, you know, it's why this, the, the, the community engagement coming forward next year as we start to update that plan is going to be important. Thanks for indulging me with that brief sermon there, which wasn't actually a question. But, but it's why I'm pursuing this line of questioning. It's also why I want to spend a moment and look at this issue that the planning commission included in the, with the RV park. Does, did the city actually do any analysis of the potential revenue impact and cost impact of an RV park usage, which ordinarily wouldn't be part of, of this particular zoning category?
Specific analysis wasn't done based on that. What we do know is they do pay transient occupancy tax and it would be a land use that would have very low vehicle trips. And if done right, it could be a very good accompaniment to another visitor serving use on the property. But in terms of a financial or fiscal impact, that has not been done. One good thing about that kind of a land use, you can fit it on parts of the site that may not be conducive to other kinds of commercial development, i.e. whether you've got slope, you've got non-visibility issues, you've got a corner of the site that, for whatever reason, you can't use it the same way you would for commercial development, maybe part of it's a drainage area, part of it's, you know, even a landscape area or park setting. So it's a good thing for sort of a remnant piece of the property where you might be able to have something that is a good add-on to other development or very good, what's the word I'm looking for, accompaniment to development?
Do we have any analysis about the relative amount of TOT? Because I'm thinking, I'm looking at the Hotel Catty Corner and, you know, relative to this, you can't build up three or four stories with an RV park. You know, the spaces that they take up are, you know, probably, you know, the size of three hotel rooms. They don't need the parking space, they've got that. But you have, there's a lot less lodging per acre on an RV park type use than you would have in a multi-story hotel, as far as I can tell. And I don't have any, I don't have a good sense of the order of magnitude, but I think it's substantial. So we really would, I would be very concerned if the RV usage, if we, if we box ourselves into a situation where down the line the RV usage is, becomes, drives the bus in terms of what else can be done with the rest of the site. If other plans fall through and you have this RV thing as part of the property, would other uses of the site then have to, in the, account for their impact on an RV park in order to be approved?
We could design this land use and a particulars of it any way we wish. I don't think we envision it to impact the other uses, instead complement the other uses on the site. And it could be phased in such a way where it's sort of a final phase of development or a later phase, should there be property that is not suitable for other primary commercial uses?
Is there another way to go at those protect, that protection? Like, I'm thinking, would it be possible for, you know, without, without delaying any of the, the approval of the master plan or approval of the site amendments tonight, could the council choose to amend the proposal there on page three seventy six by requiring that the RV park use must be an integral element of a master plan of development for the Southeast project site that includes other visitor-serving elements?
Yes.
Okay, could we set, and you're talking about sort of phasing it in, but as somebody with MBA, the logic of this thing is the least capital intensive use is going to be something like an RV park. So that's what, what any developer would want to do first, so you get some cash flow off the site and, you know, get it working for you while the rest is being developed. So the logical expectation would be that that site, that that part of the site would be developed quickly. If the rest of the, the plans then did not materialize, could we place a limit, a time limit on the CUP so that, that usage would expire unless the rest, the significant portion of the rest of the project is completed within, say, five years?
That might be problematic. It's very challenging to put time limits on land uses in terms of allowing them and having an expiration date or a sunset date. There's been a lot of court challenges along the lines of doing that. And it's very challenging to get someone to cease a land use once they've sort of become effective and grandfathered themselves in. So that's something that has been tried and tested a bit in land use law and is a little bit problematic.
Okay, if, would it be possible to amend that so that if, so that the needs of the RV park could not be, that it doesn't have standing, you know, if the laws are severed, that it wouldn't have standing to affect the uses, the other uses of that property? I mean, I just, what I'm trying to do is find a way that we don't get in a situation where, you know, you have a great plan, it's there, and then, and the RV park starts up and it's generating cash and so they want to keep it, but the rest of it falls through and, you know, they want to sell off that part of the land and somebody wants to put on, you know, the factory that's going to employ every graduate of the high school robotics team, but we can't build it because it would be a little noisy like next to a tourist oriented RV park. We could get ourselves boxed in, boxed into that kind of a scenario. And I'm trying to find a way so that we can cover that contingency without unduly constraining. without, um, unduly constraining what might be done, um, with the, this property, including using an RV park for a portion to generate the cash flow to make it work?
I think the only way to really do that is ensure that it's a component of a master plan of development and that it's phased appropriately in that master plan of development. And that it's something that, um, is approved by this council in a logical series of other land uses that have to happen ahead of time of that particular land use. So I don't, I see what you're, we're going with that, but I think a carefully laid out master plan of development that incorporates that, um, in a very, um, and I'm thinking of other types of RV parks like Flying Flag Flags RV Resort in Bulton, for example, where, uh, it's essentially located right alongside a very similar site, along a freeway, close to their downtown area. And it's part of a, you know, a very popular integral sort of lodging site where there's hotels around it and there's restaurants around it, and it's this integral thing. Not something that we're familiar with, with, you know, something of the past, like a trailer park or other sort of aesthetic issue. So I think that's the vision that, um, the potential future property owner is thinking, and that's the vision that staff was thinking. And there's probably a way to ensure that through the master plan development view process. But it's difficult to assume and plan for all nuances that could occur in this. So I think you bring up some good topics. Um, so I think we'll have to just wait and see, I think, with the rest of the council and where they decide to go with that. And we're, we're happy to work on the fly with, with adding some additional findings or removing that use altogether if the council's uncomfortable with that.
And if the council chose to remove that usage? Um, and, but, but someone wanted to come in to, uh, to bring forward a master plan of development that included it? Um, so they would, then they would have to, to re-amend this document, right? Um, could those processes be done in tandem with one another? So that if they are bringing forward a master plan of development to the council, that the council could, could also approve that as an amendment to this, to the Del Rio specific plan at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not a huge burden?
Well, there's more cost to the applicant and time involved in doing that, but it is a possibility to do it that way.
And can you briefly address the magnitude of the cost and time that we would be talking about?
Well, I suppose it could be done in conjunction with their master plan of development. They could look at, at doing that. But there would be an additional cost of six to eight thousand dollars if they wanted to add a zone change to their, to their process.
Okay. And that, would that be something that, that, that could be, um, any discretion to, to waive that if, um, we wanted to have that as an option at this time?
I don't think.
Not going to allow it, but we would waive the fee if somebody comes back with it, with a.
Yeah, I don't think there's a way to do that, uh, through our process because then we would be sort of in trouble of gift of public funds and, and potentially triggering prevailing wage and that whole end of things. And so we end up in a problem there.
Okay, well, let's, let's hear what feedback we get in, in comment on this so we can start tuning on, um, how we might deal with, um, covering this contingency. Um, I do, very briefly, in looking at the proposed uses on pages three seventy-five and three seventy-six, I've lost the latter of those. Um, but, uh, a couple of questions. Um, there's warehousing is rec, is listed on page three seventy-five as an allowed use as modified. And then it's also listed on page three seventy-six as a conditionally allowed use. Uh, could you clarify that?
Sorry, uh, Councilmember Fonzie, could you repeat the last part of that? I was looking back at that list right at the same time.
So it's also mentioned on page three seventy-six, um, as item G at the top. Um, under, these are under the conditionally allowed uses.
Yes.
So is that, the first one mentions warehousing that must have an office or employee component that's at least twenty-five percent of the floor area. So was the intent with this other one, that those be, um, warehousing that didn't, um, that didn't include, that didn't meet those criteria?
Still not sure I understand the question, what you're saying.
Okay, is it, I'm trying to figure out if this, if these are two different categories of warehouses or if we just have the same thing listed twice but are doing different things with it?
Okay.
Figure out how to, how to resolve it so it's, uh, so that someone who might want to consider that potential use uh, knows the terms under which their proposal would be considered. It's just, it's a, it's a technical clarification, I just want to know.
So I think in section G, it's just warehousing by itself. And that might be where you've got solely a distribution center where there's making a significant contribution to the community in one form or another, where there's also jobs in there. Where the other one is really, um, part of an office building where they are also doing some shipping, receiving, perhaps like manufacturing, selling products online, for example, creating products, doing things like that. So it is two different things. One is primarily just warehousing, which might be, you know, Amazon distribution center. And the other one is really an office that has that as an accessory item where they're really, um, that's their shipping or manufacturing floor as well.
Okay, so would it, would it clarify things if we added and inserted in, you know, behind warehousing, you know, that language? That it, um, something that does not have an active office and employee co, component that's at least twenty-five percent of the floor area? Would that help? I see the city manager nodding.
That would help clarify the differences between the two, yes.
Well, well, I'll include that on my, on my list of.
Okay.
Um, another item, in the, uh, uses that are prohibited, um, it does specifically call out small family daycare. Uh, and I just want to confirm that is, when I look at the zoning regulations that are, um, that the city has on the website, that for the CR zone, um, we currently list other kinds of childcare providers as being allowed. I believe that includes large family daycare and childcare center. Um, would those uses still be allowed? So that if, you know, in this, in the jobs port, part, portion of this, A, that they wanted, the employers wanted to have someone put in a childcare center for work site and res, and neighborhood childcare, that they could do that?
So there's a distinction there between a primary use and an accessory use. And when someone has childcare built into their, um, let's say their office building, and they have a small childcare room that accommodates solely the workers on that site, that's an accessory use for that business. That's not considered a childcare center. Now, if someone had a childcare or daycare center on the property where they're accepting clients from outside of that particular location, then that's the primary use of that particular, uh, thing. And that would be prohibited based on this proposed list here. If that makes sense.
Um, yeah, okay, so, so the small family daycare would be prohibited. But in the, uh, CR, uh, permitted uses by zone, um, I see childcare center with an, with an A and large family daycare center with an A. So would those still be approved uses? Even though the small family oriented one would not? I don't see anything that says that that's, uh, indicating that it, it's only allowed if it's an accessory usage. The A means approved, if I understand.
Yeah, there is a distinction. So a small family daycare by the state definition is, um, something that's actually allowed by state law that we can't actually prohibit in a lot of scenarios. So that actually should be large family daycare under item M. It does appear.
I just, I want to make sure that we allow for, uh, modern arrangements that include childcare on site, if we're looking to have people working at these locations and, um, that that, that, that can be a really valuable piece of attracting businesses and attracting employees. And I want to make sure that we're not prohibiting other categories of childcare just by calling out one particular one. Um, and I, and I need to know whether I, whether I should offer an amendment that would specify that that's an allowed use?
So if, if that is the council's intent, we would have to add that as a separate land use. Unless it's the intent, again, to have it as an accessory use to an existing business or a proposed business on the site, then we wouldn't have to add it as a primary use. Uh, but if you see that as a primary use that can serve multiple businesses either on the site or surrounding the site, then yeah, it would be its own definition as a large family daycare facility.
Okay, and can you distinguish between the childcare center and a large family daycare facility? Just to help me out?
I can, I have the definitions right here.
Thank you, Roselle.
So a childcare center is allowed in a CR zone as an allowable use. A childcare center is child daycare facilities designed and approved to accommodate fifteen or more children. Includes infant centers, nursery schools, preschools, sick child centers, and school-aged daycare facilities. These may be operated in conjunction with a school or church facility or as an independent land use. A large family daycare home. Um, and let me make sure I have my CR zones allowed here. Uh, large family daycare is, uh, allowed with a CUP, and there's a footnote. I don't happen to have the footnote. But that definition is, as provided by Health and Code Sa, uh, Safety Code Section 1596.78 or Success or Provision, a home that regularly provides care, protection, and supervision for seven to twelve children, including up to two children under the age of ten years, who reside in the home for periods of less than twenty-four hours per day while the parents or guardians are away. And then last but not least, small family daycare home, which this, uh, proposes that we prohibit, is as provided by Health and Code Safety 1596.78 or Success or Provision, a home that provides family daycare for six or fewer children, including two children under the age of ten years who reside in the home.
Okay, so I think just to be clear, um, the safe thing to do would be to, um, add, uh, offer an amendment to add childcare center as, um, an allowed use on the property. I mean, I hear you that it's there. I think that just because this was confusing, um, that that would be, um, that would avoid confusion in the future, that that would be allowed.
Point of order.
In the zoning, even though it's not specifically in the plan, it's not prohibited. But if we do that, we have to probably add all the other allowed uses that are in the zoning, in the specific plan. Otherwise, we're going to get a little bit confusing by having some things in the specific plan that are already shown in the overall zoning and not in the prohibited list. So we've got to be careful about how we modify that list. Um, the idea intent is to allow everything that's allowed in CR except as otherwise listed in this list, but, um.
Yeah, but there are, there are uses that, um, unless I'm, unless I'm mistaken, there are uses that are already allowed, um, um, in the CR zone that are included in the allowed uses, um, on page one, three, three seventy-five. And that, and perhaps I, um, am mistaken about that.
Madam Chair, I think I'd like to make a point of order. We're getting into discussion rather than questions at this point in time.
Thank you, I agree. Um, so let's, let's have, we'll, we'll take a break at some point and then let's have staff look at that. But we're kind of getting into the, like Councilmember Fonzie said, into deliberating. So let's move, keep moving forward with questions and we can take care of that when we go to make a motion.
Sure, I'm, I'm trying to clarify where there might be issues that, that, what, where, where amendments might be in order or not and where.
Understand.
So, um, but that was, um, let me see if I'm at the last of my. Oh, my last question, um, in that, to that end is, um, in a list of prohibited uses, it includes parking lots. Can we clarify that the businesses that are on that site would still be allowed to have parking lots? That this, would that, would this would just only apply if the parking lot was itself the business?
There's a land use called parking lot as a principal use, which is a business, for example, that's just parking. Let's say, hey, it's a parking ride or it's a parking lot that you charge a fee to leave your car there. That's what that is intending. Obviously, yes, there's parking allowed for each business, but parking as a principal or primary use, uh, where you're just basically storing vehicles, in essence, would be prohibited. That's another one of those outdoor storage issues that is intended to be precluded from the specific plan.
Okay, and well, during the, um, uh, questions, if, if there's an opport, and comment, if, if there's an opportunity, could we get clarification on whether or not, um, uses such as computer, data and computer services center are not already in, in a list and also listed onto here? Thanks.
We'll take a look at that during the break. Thank you, are you complete?
Yes, that, that concludes my questions.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, so Director Dunsmore, if we stick with the land uses, um, that are allowed. My question relates to the twenty thousand square feet of space that we see with building materials and hardware, and it says with outdoor storage, you know, less than twenty thousand square feet. The farm and equipment says outdoor area of up to twenty thousand, and the horticulture has sales or storage less than twenty thousand. So they're all sort of little variations, and I'm kind of wondering, are they all meant to be the same thing? Are they meant to be sales oriented? I think, you know, we've had the discussion about the commercial park area where we don't want to end up with somebody that's just, and, and obviously, we're looking at this space and this development as being something that's, that's very nice. Uh, we just want to make sure that we don't end up with something in the commercial park space where people are throwing up chain link and, and putting a desk in there and saying they've got an office and, and having a bunch of equipment and, and things that they're storing that are then affecting, of course, property values and maybe hotels that overlook those next to them. So what, what are we really looking at here?
Our intent is to have sales inventory, not storage. So probably the word storage is inappropriate in this. We took these words from the existing specific plan, but the intent is really to have some minor outdoor uses that can complement, for example, a primary land use on the property as a sales yard. So if you had a really nice building materials and hardware store, like another version of a Small Home Depot or something like that, that they could have some of the outdoor sales and things like that, uh, but not storage. And so the idea is not storage, it's really outdoor sales inventory. So perhaps we can massage that language if needed be, but that's the intent with that. And, um. Yeah.
Okay, that, that helps. Uh, and with regards to the, uh, the RV usage, uh, I think is a conditionally allowed use. I mean, because if we look at, say, you know, Flying Flags or we look at, I think up in, um, Paso, it is, um, what is it called, it's like Vine's RV Resort. Um, those are some higher end, that would bring in, you know, more TOT. Those are nice places, the kind of places that we're looking at for this area. Of course, there are many others that you were, you know, saying kind of look more like trailer parks. So in using the CUP process and the master plan of development, which I do agree with Mayor Protim Borbeau, we should bring that to the council. Um, it, it seems like that's something that we would really be able to control and make sure that it's, that it's what we want, what our community wants.
Yes.
Okay. Then regarding, the final question I have is regarding the, the fees, that four point six million, I think it's four million, six fifty. Uh, you had noted that the, that this locks in the formula. You had noted that, that this locks in the formula and not the fees. And then later you said that we'll get current cost estimates at the time of the master plan of development. So what I'm understanding you to say then is that we're locking in the formula today, but the first master plan of development that is approved, we're then locking in not only the formula, but also the fees.
Correct. Now, if, if a later master plan of development comes in with something radically different or it's a radically different timeframe, we're going to have to revisit that. For example, if there's a five or six year delay, we're going to have to reevaluate that. But that first one that came in, they're going to still be locked in at their first fee rate that they promised to pay based on the timeframe that they began their particular project. Now, the hope is that we're not stuck in a long timeframe and that we see master plan of developments come in now or within, within the next year or two, and then all of our current analysis will be effective. In fact, it even has some small cost escalators in it. So it's going to be good for a couple of years. So it's really the long term if things happen. And we, we plan for that now because of the lessons we learned with other developments where we've approved them, like in this specific plan, where there's a decade in between things that happen. And so we gave ourselves the ability to continue to plan for cost escalation or cost changes or project changes.
And also from looking at the maps and having a, having a discussion with the city manager, it seems like the detail in here and the estimate that we came up with, there's much more to it than maybe there was with the past design. And does that impact the, sort of the credibility of that number? Because I, like Mayor Protim Borbo said, when I looked at that number, I thought, okay, we've been down that road before and, and how do we, you know, have some assurances, not only us, but of course, the, the investors, the developers, that this isn't going to double in the next two years?
We have been very careful in looking at not only the construction costs, the construction cost at prevailing wage, Caltrans permitting process, right-of-way acquisition and land costs, lots of contingencies, the cost of what it takes to prepare engineered plans, all of these things in a very, very thorough analysis of every angle. To be honest with you, from my layman's turn, when I look at those costs at 4.6 million, I'm like, oh my gosh, just for that? It seems like a heck of a lot of money just to widen the road a bit, do a small retaining wall and add a couple of traffic signals. But when it was described to me in great detail, I began to understand where all the costs come into play. I believe it to be a very good estimate of, at least in the near term, for what these would cost. And it's very honest and straightforward and transparent.
And it, and I might just piggyback on that. We do have initially that, that underestimated cost of the roundabouts. That did not really have a lot of topographic survey. It didn't look at it in three dimensional. I mean, that added a bunch of costs to it. And then also like inflated costs to, these cost estimates I'm looking at right now, they're, they've got detailed, a bit, really the kind of like, much like what we bid out on our street projects. They have individual bid items, unit pricing. It has the unit, the quant, estimated quantity, unit price. Then also has other contingencies and other factors in there, like, you know, construction contingencies and engineering, admin, legal, things like that. So, as well as an escalation factor, as I mentioned, that 4.6 was assuming it'd be built in 2022. So I'm, I'm really comfortable with this because our consultant is the same consultant that's been working on the roundabout since, well, the last, you know, six, seven years. Since, and gave us that one updated cost estimate. But, so it's real deep, it's very detailed, the cost estimate. And I've looked through it and they, it seems very reasonable to me and not, not, definitely not shortchanging the city by any means.
Okay. It, it really sounds like what's gone into this is like the, almost the depth that we go into when we're bidding an F-14 project and we see so many of those that actually come in under budget, which has been wonderful. So, okay, thank you. That gives me a, a good degree of comfort that we haven't just kind of gone like that. We have some solid numbers.
We almost had to go to that level because determining what right-of-way we need is all about grading and other things too. So if we have a cut slope or if we're in a fill section or, you know, whatever it might be, we need to kind of know that we have enough, enough right-of-way. We're not shortchanging ourselves, you know. Like you see in this exhibit here, we don't have the right-of-way that's like right behind the wall or right behind the sidewalk because we know we need some wiggle room in there to, to make everything work grading wise.
Well, and I'm glad to see that because it gives surety to all parties involved and, and being able to move forward in an orderly manner. And so very glad to see that. Actually, one last thing, Phil, if you could go back to the auto repair services on the permitted uses. And I completely understand what you're looking at and that would be wonderful. How do we prevent, as Mayor Protim Borbo said, sort of the typical shop we might think of that maybe they're indoors, but they got a roll-up door and they can say they're inside, but, you know, we're, we're looking at it. So how do we, how do we prevent something like that? Would that be within the master plan of development or is that something different that we need to do?
So that is through the master plan of development process. You could also add additional caveat here, parentheses, you could say, nice ones only. Along those lines. Now, if we can, we can think of something, we can talk about that in further detail as we get into that.
We could picture, put pictures like this, not that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. We've had quite a few questions. What I'd like to do, if there are any more, like questions we haven't addressed, then I would ask my colleagues that. Otherwise, let's take a quick break and then we'll open up to public comment when we get back. Are there any questions we haven't hit? All right. So 8:39, why don't we give ourselves about 10 minutes? Let's just say 8:50. We'll see you back then.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I think we should pull that together here. Luke, you want to let me know when we're back on?
Yep, we are back up and running.
Great, thanks Luke. So, City Council is back from a break and we are moving on now to public comment for the public hearing B1, the Del Rio Road Commercial Area Specific Plan Amendment. So, I will go ahead and open up the public comment period and I will ask Luke, are there any callers or anyone on the webinar wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, we have a couple callers for this item. Our first caller is Ted Lawton. Ted, you're on the air now, if you can hear us. Go ahead and give your public comment. All right, we'll come back to Ted in a minute, see if he gets back from that break. Our next caller is Jeff Oslin.
Good evening, once again, Council. I want to commend the city staff for the nice job that they have done in redesigning and getting rid of the roundabouts on El Camino and the Del Rio area. It's a phenomenal job and much appreciated from a resident on this side of town. As far as the things go with the zoning, I think that's a great first step, if not beyond first step. And I'm in full support of some form of an RV park, if they're done nicely like the ones in Paso. It would bring a lot of TOT tax, a lot of tourism, another excuse for people to drive to Atascadero when they're going down the highway and actually stay, possibly shop, and dine with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oslin. Who do we have next? Is Mr. Lawton back with us?
Uh, well, I hope so. Let me give another shot. So Ted Lawton, you're up.
Good evening, City Council and City staff. My apologies, I was on mute. So, I was talking and you guys weren't hearing anything. My apologies.
That's all right.
So, yes, I did want to comment briefly. I believe your city staff, your Public Works and Planning Department did just a phenomenal job of figuring out a way to be flexible with use on, you know, in the specific plan by also not impacting traffic. In fact, reducing the amount of traffic, which I believe that the local residents would really appreciate. And I think there's some safety factors and other benefits that I don't know if they were discussed, but I just think they did a phenomenal job. Briefly, I think I wanted to discuss, I think it's important to include whether it's a condition use or an allowed use, but the use of the recreational lodging. And for us, the reason why it's so important is, like the last resident called in, there is a lot of RVs that pass by the 101 corridor that aren't stopping in Atascadero right now. So, you know, that's a lot of potential business revenue that's just driving down the freeway. You know, for us, it's a small portion of the overall master plan that we have, our concept to develop that site. We are in talks with Walmart. We did accept their counteroffer. So, you know, we're one step away from having the property. And for us, it's, you know, if you review all the deed restrictions, a lot of the things that you're talking about aren't, they're not allowed based on the deed restrictions. And unfortunately, I mean, there's grocery stores you can't do, there's restaurants that serve alcohol you can't do, there's auto repair you can't do, you can't do fulfillment centers, warehouses. So, at the end of the day, once you strip out the 20 things you're not allowed to do, you know, you really have to get creative. For us, we see it as this big visitor, you know, serving use that kind of ties in a bunch of different uses. That creates, you know, a visitor-serving center that we want to pull as many different types of visitors in to experience that site. And with that comes a bunch of commercial uses that serve all of those visitors that are coming in to use it. So, that's kind of the master plan. If the recreational lodging's not allowed, I believe we'd have to go through a general plan amendment, which is a lot more challenging in the future than if it were to be allowed tonight. And we're okay with conditioning it. We think that's fine and we're open to that. But, you know, tonight is not, we don't see this as the approving, approving it, right? There's still all these other processes that we have to go through in order to someday have an opportunity to do that type of use on the site. We're just saying, let's just be open to it. I think the more flexibility you can build into the site, especially right now, is critical. Once you see all the deed restricted uses, you'll know, you can't do medical, I think medical is on there. It's just, it's tough. So, for us, we believe it's a key, it's a key component to the success and the financial, fiscal viability of the site. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lawton. And Luke, next caller, speaker.
We have no additional callers. So, a reminder for those that are in the webinar directly, you can click the raise hand button and I'll let you speak during this item. But those, no additional callers at this time.
Okay. So, in the meantime, I will go to our city clerk and ask if there are any comments that have been received via email to be read into the record.
We have not received any emails.
Thank you. So Luke, I'll come back to you one last time. Is there anyone on the webinar who's raised their hand or any caller who has come on the line?
There are not.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public comment period and bring it back to Council for deliberation and emotion. What I have as the, some of the things that we wanted to make sure that, oh, can you hear me, Charles? Oh, okay. I thought you went like this and I thought, oh, okay. So, what I have here is that, you know, obviously, any motion we make needs to have the amended finding number seven. Staff, maybe you've looked at some things, the conditionally allowed uses, or not, sorry, the allowed uses. We were talking about changing storage to sales and then Councilmember Funk had some questions about, you know, are there certain allowed uses listed here in the specific plan that are already on the allowed uses? Like, are we already creating a doubling up and making sure that we're consistent?
Yes, are you asking me to chime in on those particular topics?
Yes, I am.
I might need to share my screen again, too, to show the list of allowed uses. But anyway, staff, our proposal really does include the option of modifying the word "storage" under "allowed uses" just to outdoor sales area. And additionally, there's one land use that is repetitive, and that's outdoor recreation. It's already shown in the underlying district of commercial retail. We propose just removing that out of the actual specific plan language, so it's not duplicative. And so that you have basically one list in the specific plan that's additive to what you can do and more specific, but is in addition to what's in the commercial retail zone.
So, basically, what's duplicative is what's in 4.112D. So, permitted uses, conditionally allowed, the outdoor recreation.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, remove 2D under, okay.
And just keep in mind that land use would still be allowed under the zoning as a conditionally allowed use.
Right. And we're taking care of Councilmember Funk's point of, let's make sure that we're not duplicating up that we've got, here's the conditionally allowed uses or the allowable uses under the code as it stands. And then in a specific plan, here's what's different from the code. Okay. Excellent. I think probably the biggest question, which really isn't huge, has been the conversation around RV parks. And obviously, the callers that we've had and the potential applicant, you know, have an interest in that. So, if we could have a bit of a discussion and see if we can come to some agreement on how we might want to include that. Mayor Pretem Borbo, I'm senior, ready to say something?
Well, if you are, if you are ready for a comment on that and other things.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I mean, I, to me, the RV park, I think we all have some concerns about it, but we're certainly open to it. But, if I understand correctly, we, you know, by having the master plan and development come back, which by the way, one of the things I'd like to add to a motion is, of course, that the master plans of development be reviewed by the council. But by having it come back, we can address our concerns really in more detail at that time, if I understand correctly. We could condition the hell out of it, frankly, you know, to try to address all of the potential drawbacks that we might see either in terms of the timing of the development, or the nature, or the place on the property, et cetera. So, I'm not, I mean, unless I'm missing something, I'm not too concerned about allowing, you know, that under the conditionally allowed use and being open to it. But, you know, we'll have more time to think, really think through some of the concerns raised by Councilmember Funk and have staff, you know, come up with suggestions for how we address that and not put ourselves in a pickle down the road. So, that was my comment on that. If you want to go ahead, I had a couple other comments.
Sure thing.
Curious about a motion. I thought Councilmember Funk brought up a very interesting thing about childcare. You know, that's an attractive thing in an office park these days. As you know, trust automation is put on-site, childcare and received plaudits for that. And it's worked out good for them in San Luis Obispo. But I'm wondering from our consultants, you know, is having a daycare center a traffic-intensive use? I mean, it's a drop-off in the morning, but then leave and then drop off, pick up in the afternoon and then leave, if you're not catering to employees of the workplace? And, you know, if you have a business park, you know, that might have 300 employees, but it involves 10 different businesses, let's say, none of them might want to open a daycare center, but they might all be really happy to have one on-site. So, you might have a, one operated by a separate operator, you know, not, not the business for its own use as a, whatever you call it, ancillary use or any whatever. But, I don't know if you can condition one to say it would be allowable if it's served, you know, if half of its spaces or some minimum number served the businesses on-site. Because if you didn't, you'd be adding a whole other traffic use, I would see, another set of traffic counts perhaps. I don't know if you can maybe answer those questions, but I think it's a good thing for us to try to address. And I'm hoping we could just kind of address it, indicate it's like a conditionally allowable use or something, and then be able to address it in the master plan of development. And then last thing was the auto repair thing, again, being specific enough on that, that it would be clear that, you know, hey, jump up and down for a, you know, a Tesla service center, but not, you know, an old-style garage.
And I'm wondering if that's also something we go back and address, well, not go back, that we, going forward, would address in the master plan of development? Or, you know, Phil, does it make sense for us to put that under a conditionally allowed use? Or do we achieve what we're trying to do by approving it in the master plan of development?
Might be better suited to move that to a conditional use. And you could even add a caveat that it can only be for electric vehicles. You could add another caveat that it'd be 100% indoors without, you know, visibility to the interior of the workspace from, you know, the street. You could do things like that. But a conditional use permit process is probably more appropriate for that land use, given the concerns we might have going on in the future, regardless of ownership. And regardless, master plan development, they only come in once. And you get to review that, and you get to review their preliminary land uses and their building designs and the whole thing. But over time, what can happen is those land uses can change without our control. Someone else moves out, someone else moves in, different tenants move in and out. And as a city, we're not going to be regulating that over the long term. And things, things can change. So...
Okay. I think that's a good idea.
Have that long-term regulation on that.
So, to follow up on Mayor Pretem's, Board of Bo's point and what Councilmember Funk had brought up about the childcare, I think he brings up a good point about the extra trips. If it becomes, you know, for individuals that don't work at that site, we add a lot more trips to it. So, what is, I know that our city manager read all of the different definitions. What is currently allowed in that? I don't have that in front of me right now.
Childcare is an allowed use already right now. It's not a conditional use, it's an allowed use. So, they can do that. It is not a substantial trip generator. You assume you're going to have a childcare facility that may have, let's say it has 35 children, you're going to have 65 trips a day for something like that. Or maybe 120 trips a day. It's not very, very significant. But it does add some trips during the peak hours. So, you've got to look at that. What's it going to be? We didn't specifically look at that land use as one of the things that we assumed in there. So, you know, perhaps, you know, Steve, our traffic consultant, our native architect, weigh in as to whether that's going to be a significant anomaly in the land use plan. But it's already an allowed use. So, we could look at it as we get a master plan of development or as we get, you know, the proposal that comes through and evaluate it at that time. It's also an option.
Well, and I thought what you had said, Director, was that under, on the page 376, the following uses shall be prohibited, M, small family daycare. You said that is actually, you can't prohibit that. And you said that should have said large. Correct. Like, so our intention was to exclude some type of daycare?
Yeah, let me add a little more discussion to that. So, some of the assumptions on the Sutherland property is that we might see some residential development above commercial development, like in a mixed-use type scenario. And we didn't want to have those mixed-use developments turn out to be daycare centers within those residential units above the commercial and things like that. That was our way of trying to curb that sort of scenario. Now, the state may supersede us and say, hey, you have to allow these things if you're going to allow residential units. So, I think we're trying to be creative in that particular type of land use to say, hey, can we limit that? If that makes any sense. But sure, the state may supersede us and say, well, if it sticks or fewer, you've got to allow this small, small daycare.
Okay. But a larger one, we're not disallowing. That's already part of the allowable. So, if someone were to locate there and serve those businesses or others, that's currently allowed.
But that's only allowed in a single-family residence. And there's no single-family residential really in the specific plan area, except for the six units that are to the east of the north site.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the larger, what's allowed in the CR zone, you said is already allowed.
In terms of the childcare facility, that's already allowed. But in terms of the daycare facility, which is the other definition, let me clarify that, that's a conditional use permit.
Okay. So, Steve, if you...
Not shown in the list in the specific plan, but it is in the zoning regulations as an allowed, as a conditionally allowed use, the large family daycare.
Okay. Okay. So, at that time, the traffic could be analyzed if somebody wanted to come forward with that.
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, just to clarify, there are two different sort of larger childcare categories. And one of them is the childcare center. That's the one that has 15 kids, or up to 15 kids, or up to or greater than 15 kids.
15 kids or more?
15 or more. Okay. And that's, that is an A-list use in the zoning handbook. I would note that large, in the zoning handbook online, large family daycare is also listed as an A use for, not a CUP use, in, under the CR category. So, if that's something that that might need to get updated, just to note, if that, if the, because I'm looking at the handbook and not at the text of the zoning code. The handbook is the, you know, the more user-friendly thing.
I think actually, that is a conditional use permit. I'm wondering if you're looking at an outdated version of the handbook. I think that the current zoning does have it as a conditional use for the large family daycare in there.
We can, we can follow up on that later.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like we're good with that.
Yeah, I just typically want to not place any additional restrictions on daycare, because I think that this is a use that you would want to allow in this kind of setting if someone wanted to do that. And specifically, the kind of scenario that Mayor Pretem Borbo mentioned, where none of the businesses that are locating in there really want to run their own daycare center, because they're not in that business. But to have one on-site would be a real attraction to get, you know, to have somebody come in and to make that kind of a business model work, you might very well need to accommodate... You might very well need to accommodate the, um, kids of people who live in the neighborhood but not on site. Or who are coming from elsewhere and are desperate to find a place to have good childcare, uh, which a lot of folks are in the area.
And so I think we're, we're all on the same, we're all on a similar page with that. And that would be taken care of when we get into more details. Uh, Councilmember Fonzie?
No, I, I would tend to disagree because we have just a limited amount of space where we can get commercial retail. If we give it too freely to other uses, we're not going to get the revenue that we need to run our city. But a childcare center is a great idea, but it can be in other areas nearby. Within the specific plan area, it might be an accessory use that a company that's providing office space or whatever they do, provides, but I don't really think it's appropriate to have a large preschool or childcare center, even though it might be handy. It might be outside the specific area. We want to save this area for commercial retail. And all of these uses that are conditionally allowed, if you think about them, they could be a good thing or a bad thing. But I, I'd like to get some teeth into this and I'm not sure how to do this and perhaps Phil could help me. But I'd like to say that other uses such as these conditionally allowed uses may exist based upon compatibility, revenue generation and phasing that will be given great weight and consideration. So that we have some kind of metric. So we can say, oh yeah, um, an RV park might be nice if we can fit it in the back and it doesn't take away commercial space. And we might say, well, if they're putting it in the front of the lot, it takes away revenue generation. It's not compatible with the next door housing area or whatever it may be. But we need specific metrics to put in there that we can say, we want these to be given great weight when they come in for their CUP. Can we do that, Phil?
Yes, that's an option. You could have a list of uses that are specific that you need to make specific findings for. Similar to the proposal that we have, um, in your staff report now for the RV parks where there's a set of specific findings. You can also have a note that says, hey, the following other land uses are, um, secondary to, um, the priority of the specific plan and shall be only allowed, uh, based upon the following conditions, um, that are present. Whether they're, you know, integral to, um, a necessary function of another primary use, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm thinking of different ways that could happen. We can create some wordsmithing along those lines. But simply you can also, with any conditional use permit, it's purely discretionary based on the consistency with the general plan and the overall spirit of the specific plan and what we're trying to do. I mean, the whole intent of this specific plan is to create a viable commercial center. It's the Del Rio Commercial Area Specific Plan. And so if we tie everything back to that and you, you have a caveat for any of the conditional uses, then you've got the discretion to make good decisions based on proposals that come forward.
What I have seen happen in the past is we've gotten things like car washes in residential areas and other things that got squeezed in there somehow. Because we didn't have the overall vision of what we really, really wanted in that area. And that's what I'm trying to get at. We want certain things to be given heavy weight. And I want that to go to the planning commission if they're going to hear the conditional use permit first. So we stay focused on saving this for commercial retail. So I don't know whether the other council members have any feeling about this, but I think that might give us some guidance in the future. I like Susan's idea about, uh, phasing so that the RV park or whatever it may be recreational area doesn't come in first and the other doesn't happen. So phasing fiscal, uh, generating ability and compatibility would be probably the three that I can think of. And perhaps there's others that would be of use as well.
Is, so Councilmember Fonzie, are you saying that there's something that you want written, written within the specific plan? Or are we saying like, and, and so we need to, we would need to work at crafting something? So Phil, you've probably taken some notes here on what we're looking at. Councilmember Funk, it looked like you wanted to say something more?
Uh, yeah, first of all, just to clarify with, with Phil, can we actually require, um, revenue generation capacity as part of the, um, as one of the factors that's considered in looking at a CUP or in evaluating an element of the, a master plan of development?
Yes.
Nice. Because that's, because that's really the issue about the, you know, the RV park. Um, is not, not what it contributed in, you know, in the first round. I think you could, we can, we can manage its thing. I do think that there is a case to be made to let, to not prohibit that from going early. Uh, because of the, because it is the least capital intensive use that somebody would make of that property. We just want to make sure that we don't end up with, with, in a sit, in a hole where, um, where its existence precludes other uses if the original plan falls apart.
Understood.
Is there a way for us to get at that with, um, conditions on the master plan of development that would, um, or that, um?
Well, we're not, we're not doing the master plan of development right now. So what we're really looking at is what sort of a, what sort of an overarching policy statement, I would call it, do we want to make when it comes to these conditionally allowed uses?
Right.
So that's, I think, what we're looking at.
Yeah, and what I'm trying to find out is it is, can that be managed through the process of the master plan of development? Or do we need to make some separate statement in this document of the specific plan?
My understanding, Phil, is we would make the statement in the specific plan regarding, and not specifically about RV parks, but the overarching statement of when looking at these allowed uses, these are the priorities. Revenue generation, you know, et cetera. And that could be a policy statement that we put here with, in the specific plan for the conditionally allowed uses. Is that correct?
That's correct. Now's the time to do that because like I mentioned before, with a master plan of development, they may propose an initial set of land uses and a building style and all their improvements. And they may build that, but those land uses can change as long as they're consistent with the specific plan. So it's important that we write in the specific plan, uh, the features that you want to be there for longevity.
Okay.
And not rely 100% on the master plan of development for that.
Got it. Uh, Mayor Protam?
No, that actually specifically addressed my concern because I thought we could address all that in the master plan of development. But if, if Phil thinks it's advisable to include kind of a statement of intent or philosophy or overarching policy into the specific plan, then that, then it sounds like that's what we probably should do. I was trying to avoid getting too deep in the weeds here when we want to get into the weeds, uh, during the master plan of development. But if we need to make an overarching statement, then let's do it.
Uh, so if we come to a final, yes, Councilmember Fonzie?
I think you've got it, Phil. Um, my thought was that, you know, our RV park might be a very good revenue generator because they always tank up with gas and we get gas money off of that. However, you know, the phasing is important, the compatibility is important. And I think really giving guidelines to those who are making the decisions and those who are considering buying property is very important, particularly in a specific plan. So if we could just drill down on what we were thinking, I had the three points, compatibility, revenue generating and, um, phasing. If there's others, perhaps those would be added now.
What I was.
I'm, Susan.
What I was working on and to capture that was that we're looking for the strategic contribution to and synergy with a viable commercial center, including revenue, revenue generation, about compatibility and phasing. Does that?
Sounds good.
For you? Okay. And I, I think that we could, um, do sort of a phasing light on the, the RV park. Where you want them to be able to get this, not necessarily have that be the last thing that's done. But, but perhaps that we could require that, um, other elements, uh, significant other elements of the, in, included in the master plan of development are, um, in process in some way. And Phil, I'm kind of looking to you here, can we, where, is there kind of a substantive marker that they have plans, that they have? Um, they, basically what I want to do is set this so that, so that we're asking the developers not to open the, the RV park until they've got some skin in the game to do the larger thing, but not require that it be phased all the way at the end. I think that protects everybody's interests reasonably well. But I don't know.
Well, I, I, I think we need to be careful about, I think we want to be careful about getting too specific about just an RV park. Um, and some RV parks out there are amazing and high-end and really nice. So we don't want to put something in there that someone comes along and then we've, some, ham, hamstring them in some way. So I don't want to get so specific.
Well, we are, we are actually being in this proposed language very specific about RV parks. Because it is the one usage that was not allowed in any fashion in this, in CR that the planning commission added to this document.
I understand that. And that is something we've actually been talking about for the last year or so. So it's not completely new to us this evening. But I do, your point is well-taken. Um, Mayor Protam Borbo, you had another comment on this?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I understand where Councilmember Funk is coming from that this one got added and it got added with some specific language. But I think really the key thing is if we add the, the, the three statements of intent or policy that Councilmember Fonzie talked about, we're really just putting potential property buyers and developers here on notice of what we expect to see or, or the kinds of things we're going to consider when we look at their master plans of development. And, you know, I, I think we, um, you know, we leave ourselves open the option of doing all kinds of conditions on them, whether it be phasing, location, uh, timing, you know, minimum expectation or revenue generation, whatever it might be. I, is, I think just covering what Mr. Dunsmore got to, we just need to be specific enough in this precise, in this specific plan to say, hey, developers, this is the kinds of, kinds of things we're going to consider and we're going to look for when we consider your master plan of development. But I don't.
And your CUP.
Need to get into those things right now.
I, I would agree. I think it, and it's also within the CUP, so I think that is, is taken care of. Um, I do want to ask one other, one other thing. We had a little bit of a disagreement on the childcare issue. So currently, um, Director Dunsmore, what you're saying is childcare center 15 or more is an allowed use and large family daycare is a conditionally allowed use. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then we are excluding small family daycare in the specific plan?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have agreement on that amongst the four of us? Okay. Yes, Mayor Protam?
My understanding though is we cannot preclude small care day centers that operate out of a, a single-family residence. But can we, can you exclude them from operating out of a multi-family residence?
I think what Director Dunsmore, you had said that there's a potential that that may change in the future and we may not be able to. So whether we have it in here or not, doesn't necessarily matter. So I think we can go with that. So if I'm to pull this together in something, uh, with a motion, we are looking at, and I will, I'm going to, is if there's, I think I've got it all, so you tell me. Uh, we are, we have the amended finding number seven. We have the change in the warehousing language that Councilmember Funk wanted to, um, be more specific about. Uh, we have changing storage to outdoor sales on those three items on the allowable uses. Uh, we are also removing outdoor recreation as a conditionally allowed use because it's already uh, in the, in the zoning code. We are going to recommend that we bring the master, any master plan for development in this area back to the council. We are changing garages, uh, to a CUP, garage auto repair, that type of thing. And we are adding wording to the CUP, uh, the wording that sort of, uh, we merged with Councilmember Fonzie and Councilmember Funk, uh, looking at compatibility, revenue generation and phasing, uh, given the strategic contribution. And I think, uh, Councilmember Funk, you probably had that specific language that you could give to staff or we've got it in the recording. Have I encompassed all of our comments and changes? Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, um, early on I had suggested with respect to the specific language included in the plan um, on page 376 with regard to the RV parks, that we add a condition, uh, or the consider, consider adding a condition that, uh, the usage must be in, an integral element of a master plan of development for the site. That includes other visitor facing elements.
I'm okay with that.
I don't think that that, that violates anything that anybody, any of the concerns that we've had come up. I think it clarifies, um, and I would appreciate that inclusion. And I think that gives, gives our planning, um, the, uh, commission good guidance in proceeding on it.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I would ask, uh, Councilmember Fonzie, Mayor Protam Borbo?
I'm not sure why you mentioned visitor facing, other visitor facing elements, but I, I, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And, uh, city manager, you had your hand up, which probably means I need to be more clear.
Well, and I would, um, maybe ask to take a break so that we can definitely refine that language uh, that, that Councilmember Fonzie, uh, proposed. I've been typing up everything you said. There was one more that I had on my list, um, and that's page 379, change maximum of 16 units to maximum of 24 units, that, that typo.
Correct, the typo, yeah. Uh, so would you like us to? Phil?
And if I may, just one more clarification on the master plan of development approval. Um, if that goes to city council, there's also one more caveat in the specific plan that talks about master plan of development amendments. So not only a new master plan of development, if someone wants to come in and amend their master plan of development, that's also right now written as a use permit amendment, which would not go to planning commission. I think you're, which would go to, planning commission, not council. I think your intent is to also have that amendment come to city council. Am I not mistaken? I just wanted to clarify because there's two different.
Well, I, I'm, I'm wondering, at, at the risk of like suddenly everything's coming to council, is there, is there a way that in the wording that there's changes that are significant enough that staff deems it needs to be brought to council? Which the city manager's going to know if the council wants to see something. So i- is there a way to write it that not just, you know, some little tweak now has to come back to the, the council at great cost and expense to everyone?
There is, and there's a way to put that in there. And some of that language is already in the specific plan where it says that, um, minor changes may be permitted, um, without, uh, planning commissioner, city council approval or without use permit amendment if a finding of substantial conformance can be made by the planning director. So in other words, somebody can come in with minor amendments that are consistent with the spirit and intent of the specific plan and not have to go back through a process. So really the reality is it's only intended to be for major amendments, but I wanted to clarify that and we can address that language.
That's perfect. So why don't we take that break that the city manager wanted? Um, how long would you like? Oh, let's, uh, Mayor Protam Borbo?
Yes, I had a question for Mr. Dunsmore. I don't think, I hope there's anything we can do about this, but I wanted to clarify something. The, uh, in the phone call, uh, Mr. Leighton, I believe it was, who's prospective buyer and, and, uh, proposer of the RV thing. He mentioned that, you know, the deed restrictions that Walmart was putting on the sale of the property. And we're familiar with some of those, you know, because they don't want a, a large retail thing competing with them, you know, a distribution center, et cetera. He mentioned no alcohol-serving restaurants, or at least I thought that's what I heard. And I think you had mentioned to us some time back that that might be a thing that Walmart would put as a deed restriction upon their sale of the property. So is that to say in some of the out parcels, you know, an Olive Garden or something like that, that we might be excited about getting, would essentially be a no-go because of that, that kind of deed restriction?
It's certainly possible. I have seen lists of deed restrictions from other property transactions associated with Walmart and they do seem to be far-reaching, above and beyond the competitive issue, but more upon a moral issue or other issue that the company feels should be. more upon a moral issue or other issue that the company feels should be in place for future tenants. I don't know what the specific deed restrictions would be on this particular site. I haven't seen alcohol restrictions. I have seen adult entertainment restrictions on their deed restrictions. So you just never know what they intend to, or where their current thought is on that. But it's certainly possible they could do that as a condition of property.
We would be, I mean, we would be powerless to try to address that in any way. They're entitled to put that deed restriction on, which could limit the potential from our perspective as to what kind of restaurants might go on a, on a place like that.
It's very possible, yeah. Classic private control of land use, unfortunately.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's what I was afraid of, but I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and take that break? It is 9:33. Why don't we come back at 9:40 and we can have our motion ready? Hey, Luke, are you there?
I'm here.
I don't know if you got my text. So my husband said that prior to us going on break, we were not online. It just said we're on a short break. That had been on prior to us taking the break.
It was on prior to the break? Well, it depends on if you're watching, because Channel 20 is going to be a couple minutes delayed.
Right. So before we went to a break, he already, they, we were already on break on Channel 20 before we went to an actual break.
Really? Okay.
Yeah. So he thought at 9:30, we didn't go on a break till 9:33.
Correct. Okay. We will all follow up and see if we can track that down.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. So it doesn't even say that we're on a break on Channel 20 right now. It just, oh, now it, now it does. It was prior. Okay.
Yeah, we just, we just figured it out. So it should be back up and running. Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, see you in a couple minutes. Keep us on a break. Somehow I am echoing and I don't know why. All right, now I'm not. Excellent. Luke, if you could keep us on a break until we hear from our City Manager and see if they've had time to, you know, wordsmith everything and make sure, because I know we gave them a lot to do.
Mayor, do you want us to like jump ahead to committee reports or anything, or that might be cool?
Well, she's right here, so let's see what we.
Oh, there she is. Scratch that point.
We, I just emailed off to Phil and Kelly. They're looking at it right this moment. They should be ready here any moment.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Funk?
While I was on break, I realized that I, that I should add to my ex parte list that I had a conversation about this with Planning Commissioner Tori Keen. She doesn't have any stake in this financially, but I'll add that to the list.
Thank you. All right. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So Luke, do you have us off still or are we on?
We are on and ready to go whenever you are.
Okay, great. I just want the public to know if they're chiming in and seeing us, wondering what's going on. We're finishing up some final touches on the motion for item B1. So ask you for your patience. But I will say this is a, I think this is exciting and a long time in coming. When we first started envisioning this and bringing these, as we've been talking about, head of household jobs here to Atascadero, helping to correct that imbalance that we have between a lot of housing and not as many jobs and fixing that so more people can not only live here but work here and then dine here and shop here and start creating that synergy that we really need to, to keep moving forward and really develop out our economy here. So this is exciting. And fewer cars on the road, so that's not a bad thing either. Phil, I've riffed about as long as I'm going to riff. Are you coming back on?
We are back.
All right, great.
We are back. And Luke, could you share my screen for me? Okay, did that work? Do I have my computer up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So what we have is amend finding number seven. Hold on one moment. I'll let you guys read those while I go close my door so I don't get an echo. Page 379, change maximum of 16 units to maximum of 24 units. We're going to eliminate 4.1.12D, which is outdoor recreation. That's already allowed by CUP. We're going to change the word storage to sales in 4.1.11C and 4.1.11E. We are going to eliminate the word or storage area in 4.1.11F. That's where it reads farm equipment and supplies with out, sorry, horticultural specialties with outdoor sales or storage area. We want to eliminate that storage area. We're going to change the wording in 4.1.12G to warehousing. We're going to add where the active office and employee component is less than 25% of the floor space. And then continue with providing a finding of community benefit is made. We're going to move 4.1.11A, auto repair services, including the indoor-only, no outdoor storage of inoperable vehicles. I didn't know if we were adding another condition or not to that, to section 4.1.12. So it's a conditionally allowed use. And we did add those other conditions to two, which might be able to take care of adding another condition. We're going to add for, another condition to RV parks, so 4.1.12F. We're going to add a V. RV parks must be an integral part of the master plan of development of the site and must include other visitor-serving elements. We're going to add at the very top of 4.1.12, where it says the following uses shall be conditionally allowed, we're now going to say the following uses shall be conditionally allowed with the following additional finding, if it can make a strategic contribution to and synergy with a viable commercial center, including consideration of revenue generation, compatibility and phasing. That is my understanding of what Susan proposed, and you guys nodded to, including Roberta, who brought it up. And then last but not least, on section 6.10.1, we're going to add that all master plans of development and master plan amendments must go to the City Council.
I think we, you're just about right on. I think we also wanted language for a master plan amendment that is minor enough in nature that it could be done. Phil has that wording from other, in other areas. So we wanted to add that.
And that wording is already in, in the specific plan. If I can read you what's in the specific plan already, that's already accommodated for a minor amendment for the Community Development Director to make a determination for specific plan consistency.
So the Community Development Director can make a minor change to the specific plan or to the master plan of development?
I meant to say master plan of development, not specific plan.
Okay. Okay, so that's already in there. There was also, we want to make sure the amendment, amended finding number seven, but that's already written up. I would also say just to note that once auto repair services A moves down to two, to number two, now brewery is going to be A. So just make sure that when we're saying, you know, C and E and F are changing, they'll all ultimately be like B, D and E, just if that matters. And I'm thinking just for consistency, we might want to say, some places we say up to 20,000, other we say less than 20,000 square feet, just making that consistent. I don't think we have to nail that in, but the consistency would be, would be nice, just so it looks clean. Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, very slight changing on number eight. My intention there was that the other visitor-serving elements be part of the master plan of development, not necessarily of the RV park section. So that they, change the language, remove and must, and say that includes.
Thanks. Mayor Protem Borbo?
Yes, on item 10, I think to be clear though, that, you know, the Community Development Director has the authority already existing in the specific plan as written to process certain minor changes. This should state then that all master plans of development and, and master plan amendments not approvable by the Community Development Director must go to Council. Because the way that's written, if you take that literally, they all must come to us. And I think you just.
If I could, if I could have you look at page 410 really quick. Which basically says you don't do a master plan amendment unless you can't make a finding of substantial conformance.
Okay. So in other words, you're saying what Mr. Dunsmore can approve does not meet the definition of a master plan amendment?
That is my understanding. Is that your understanding, Phil? That's the way I read this.
Yeah, it's substantial conformance. It's really, A, there's something a little different here, but it's substantially in conformance with the specific plan. It's not truly an amendment.
Yeah. And if it met that criteria, it would not be an amendment. So I withdraw that. I'm okay with that wording.
I mean, you can't return it on.
All right. So if we are good to go, I would actually appreciate if you would indulge me in making the motion. All right. So I will move approval of the, I will move approval of adopting the draft resolution to approving an addendum to the previously certified final EIR for the Del Rio Road Commercial Area Specific Plan and determine that said addendum, together with a previously certified EIR, serves as the appropriate environmental documentation for the proposed specific plan amendments and introduce for first reading by title-only draft ordinance amending the Del Rio Road Commercial Area Specific Plan to modify the list of allowed land uses, associated project descriptions and related traffic mitigation measures with amending, the change, the amended finding number seven that Phil showed us early on and the list of changes that we are looking at here, which you have up there. Thank you, Rochelle. So numbers one through 10 that we have agreed to. Does that serve as? Does that serve as sufficient? I will ask our city clerk for a motion.
That works, yes.
Thank you. And do I have a second? I have council member Funk has a second. And do you need to read that off, Laura?
I do need to. I'm just trying to grab it. I do need to read the title of the resolution, so let me just go and find it. I mean, the title of the ordinance, right? Is there also an ordinance?
Yes, the draft ordinance.
Yeah, so let me just grab the title of that. Give me two more seconds, and then I will read that off.
You got it.
Okay, so I have an ordinance of the city council of the city of Atascadero, California, amending the Del Rio Road Commercial Area Specific Plan to modify the list of allowed land uses, associated project descriptions, and related traffic mitigation measures. Did we have a second?
Yes, you had a motion by Mayor Moreno and a second by council member Funk.
Thank you. Council member Funk?
Yes.
Council member Fonzie?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Borbo?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we are on to item C1, management reports. This is a lot of the information we've just gone through, so we're very familiar with this at the moment, the Del Rio Road El Camino Plan Line on the vicinity of the 101 interchange. And this is our public works director, Mr. Nick DeBar.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, one, I threw this picture up here during one of our breaks. This is kind of the level of detail that we had, that we've been using for the last five to seven years on the Del Rio project. This shows kind of like a 3D version, and that was kind of one of the busts in the last estimates is we didn't account for the fill that would have been required. So anyways, might be the last time we show this roundabout. So I talked about the traffic analysis with the, the Del Rio specific plan. I just wanted to touch base on this other traffic analysis that we did, looking at these four undeveloped and underdeveloped parcels in the vicinity. We had talked about them in the last item, but one thing that we tried doing is, we went through 14 different land use scenarios during this traffic sensitivity analysis. And I was kind of looking at, you know, what are these sites going to potentially develop to? This is a worst-case scenario that we went with to determine, you know, what, what we would maybe see as a worst-case scenario. In here, you'll see annex west, annex east, and the Walmart site are all pretty much the same as the previous one. The Walmart site is not the regional shopping, just the amended specific plan. It's a church site that we really, you know, looked at potentially a zoning change or general plan amendment change. So that, that really has a lot of, a lot more traffic and trips and everything. So you can see 11,429 daily trips. So that's what we kind of went with and then now analyzed a lot of these interchanges on. In that sensitivity analysis, there was only two mitigations we've looked at. One was a westbound Del Rio Road to northbound 101, right turn lane. And then the second one, in addition to that, was traffic signal mods to Del Rio and El Camino, kind of that mitigation two that we had in the last item. But it also included the US 101 signal coordination and timing as well with that. By doing those things, you can see in table two, this is existing, so everything's working pretty well in the interchanges. And when you throw this land use scenario, HC, that 11,000 some odd daily trips, you can see, really, the only intersection that fails is again, Del Rio, Del Camino. And there's two directions, really, it's that northbound left turn, and then there's that eastbound approach. So with that, again, that right turn pocket doesn't really get you a whole lot. It's still, it probably fixes the eastbound approach quite a bit, but that northbound left turn is probably the one that fails. And it goes from 119 second delay to 19.3 second delay, so almost cuts it down by 90%. Then also, we looked at the queuing. There's three areas that queuing has issues at the El Camino Del Rio. It's the northbound left turn, and then the eastbound approaches I just talked about. And then also the eastbound approach going over the bridge from the south ramp intersection to the north ramp intersection. So only 290 feet available, but, you know, doing mitigation two combined with one actually handles, you know, this 11,400 and some odd trips. Wanted to point out one correction I know, heard from through the grapevine, a couple of you guys caught this, but this is on page 484. I didn't catch this, but these subtotals were actually wrong. I was copying pieces of tables in there, so this is a, this is a corrected numbers associated with that. So back onto the plan line, so we actually looked at all those mitigations that we just talked about, plus the mitigations from the previous item with the eastbound approach to the Del Rio and, and El Camino intersection. But this is the overall plan. I'm gonna add that, that portion on the west side. Tonight, we're only talking about the east side. So that portion on the west side by Apple Valley and the, and the church site and the micro home community or lodging is not part of the motion tonight, but we'll come back at a future time and talk about it. But all of this analysis that we've been doing, this 2020 analysis and the specific plan analysis assumes Ramona will be moved away from the southbound ramp. Right now, it fails. It just does not have the stacking in either direction. So for all of this to work, that actually needs to be moved over, or we need to make it a dead end or something like that. So there are some issues with that. We, we didn't wanna really bring this up tonight. We'll come back with it once we have some little bit more outreach with the neighbors. So this, you saw earlier, I won't talk about that too much, but same, same exhibit as we had before. The yellow highlight is actually property acquisition that we need. So you can see here, you know, behind the sidewalks and everything, we need to gain a little bit. And then orange is actually a maintenance easement, so again, in front of that wall next to the drive-through fast food place on the northwest corner. This is on the other side in between annex east is on the top, and then the Walmart site is on the bottom. So you can see just kind of what we're planning on doing, you know, just widening out the pavement, and then really, you know, getting those lane configurations. You can do a lot with pavement markings and other things to, to really make this flow well. Again, we'll need some right-of-way on both sides of north and south sides. This is El Camino, so south would be to the left, north would be to the right. It's Mission Oaks is on the top of this map, and there's a little bus turn out there. The, the one item right in here is that new collector road that would, you know, Walmart was mitigated to put in, that would come up and go to the residential and potentially continue on to the south. So that's still in there. Southbound is over here shaded out. That's basically gonna remain the same, so we don't need to get any right-of-way or anything on that side. Approaching, this is northbound, again, extending out that left turn movement to westbound. It's a key thing, and this'll have one lane going north, and then a dedicated right turn And then this is north of Del Rio, so in between annex east and west, you can see still one lane northbound will be able to accommodate out the traffic that, and will throw at this with that, with, with right turn pockets. So this, this improvement right here is really generally related to annex east and the, that business park that is proposed. But again, we have a left turn here into this combined. This is where the convenience store gas station and the fast food drive-through restaurant there. And then just kind of tapering back up, we're still looking at continuing this up potentially with maybe a, a left turn, two-way left turn lane in the middle. But, you know, some of those details are, are still working out, but in general, this is the, the idea with the plan line. And again, we don't really need right-of-way on the north, around the west or east side of El Camino, north of Del Rio, so we're looking pretty good there. So really, the recommendation tonight is to draft a council adopt draft resolution approving the Del Rio Road El Camino Real Plan Line in the vicinity of the US 101 interchange, and this would be on the east side only. As I mentioned, we'd come back at a future date with the west side, once that gets a little more developed and we do a little outreach out there. So with that, I can take any comments or questions you have.
Thank you, Director. And just in case there's anyone in the public saying, didn't we just look at all of this? What we're doing this far for the, the, the plan line here, once we do that, as the director said, we know where the, where, where there's any property that needs to be purchased for future improvements, and it also lets developers know, like where that, that line is, where they're going to then be responsible for their own improvement. So this is just a formalization of that. So if we ask any questions, I am seeing Mayor Pretend Borbo.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mr. DeBar, what we're doing though, when we adopt, you know, it says recommendation, adopt the, the plan line, you know, we specifically have on page 491, the picture with the, shows the wall and the maintenance easement. That's the most important piece of this. But are we also adopting these other areas where the yellow, you know, for example, these yellow areas on the northeast and southeast corner of Del Rio and El Camino Real, are we also adopting all these different yellow lines here in addition to those? Cause that, that property, even though it's less than the original traffic circle arrangement, still has to be obtained, correct?
Yes. So you're, the answer to your question is yes, the plan line adoption for the resolution would include everything on the east side of US 101. So the Del Rio improvements and the El Camino improvements.
Okay. Okay, so if you could keep that slide up you have right now. What I was curious about here is, there's a very faint red line, I believe it says existing right-of-way on the south side across from where the land acquisition for the wall is. If I'm reading that correctly, we're just gonna have two lanes going east. You're gonna have a left turn lane to go north on El Camino, and a straight-through lane to go east on Del Rio. And that same lane, you're gonna make a right out of. So there's not a separate right-hand turn lane there at the bottom of that hill.
Not in this. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, well, cause I mean, originally, when this was gonna be old traffic circle, we were gonna acquire some land at the corner there, you know, when there were difficulties in the negotiations with the 7-Eleven owner. But, I don't know, it always drives me nuts to be waiting to make a right turn when you're behind somebody, and there's almost enough room to do it, but not quite. And it looks like, is that a bike lane we have? And then it's dotted so that people are inevitably gonna be making right-hand turns out of that sort of non-existent lane? And why, maybe it wasn't necessary in the traffic counts, but wouldn't that have been a significant traffic alleviation feature to have a right turn lane in the last 100 feet or so?
Yeah, and it kind of, it kind of operates like that a little bit, cause this dash line, it allows cars to pull in here and then make a right turn, so we'll act as a right turn lane. We expect this driveway with the shell and 7-Eleven station to be a right-in, right-on only. And maybe the right out, you know, maybe they can go through, but they won't be able to get over in this lane anymore going north. The, the future bridge widening project would allow a third lane to come through here, but right now, just how traffic comes off the bridge here, and you can see this little island, you know, or the pavement mark in here, they're really kind of, it's pushing it right now to kind of shift over this way already. So putting in another right turn lane with this scenario is a little tougher, but with a bridge widening, a third lane would be available because we shift everything to the north a little bit and then be able to fit that in.
For 20 years from now, if Caltrans wanted to replace the bridge, you could add another lane there. You'd have to buy a little bit of land. Okay. All right, thank you.
And I think, Mr. Weinberger, did you have something to, to add to the conversation there?
I just wanted to point out, you know, why the, we're separating the left turn lane here, cause right now, the left and the through are shared. And when you do that, you have to, what's called splitting the phase, you, eastbound approach goes and the west has to wait whenever you have a left and a through sharing a movement. So by moving the right, the right, the through with the right turn lane, we can now have east and west lefts run concurrently as a left turn phase, and then through runs concurrently. It's more efficient than whenever you have this split phase situation. So that is part of the signal timing improvements that go with this that really help out the intersection.
Thank you. Do we have any other council questions?
Actually, yes.
Is it critical to the passing of this?
Yeah. Well, it relates to passing this. The wall, the wall, let's be constructed. Are we going to acquire that land and build that wall? Or, or could the owner of that property build the wall and, while it's on property, private property, and then turn it over to us? Or as, as part of buying, you know, buying said little easement there, we would, could pay for an already constructed wall in order to save costs?
Well, I think that would go into the, basically sort of into the pot that where then other development might have to pay back that developer.
Understand. I mean, the relevant issue is, relevant issue is it'd be a lot cheaper for the developer to pay for, to build the wall on his own property than for us to build the wall on the property after we buy it. And we are expensive when we do.
We have been talking to that developer and his engineers and representatives about doing exactly that, and then getting a, you know, a credit towards the, you know, impact fees or whatever it might be. So, and then also like to get a, right now, you know, like an appraisal of that land too, and what the fair value is for that land, and then working that out through, you know, some kind of an agreement of some sort. So our city manager might wanna weigh in on that, too.
I'm assuming because she came on, it means that it's a public benefit, so whether the developer does it or we do it, it's still prevailing wage.
We are, we are working through all of those things. I would expect to see a development agreement come before you, talking about all of those things, wrapping in the right-of-way, who's building the wall, and what the conditions are at that point.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council member Funk. You're muted.
If you can indulge me on a comment, I just wanna thank our traffic engineer and the city staff for doing an amazing job of finding the ways to handle traffic, to do things with striping and laning and timing so that it dramatically reduced the cost of the development that we dealt with, and, and the, and has a very small footprint on the available commercial property in this wonderful space. So, thanks.
Absolutely. All right, so it looks like we are good, we are good to go with our questions, so I will go ahead and open it up to public comment and ask Luke if there's anyone on the line, phone or webinar, who would like to speak on this item.
We have no one who would like to speak on this item.
Thank you. And I'll ask our city clerk, are there any comments that were received by email to be read into the record?
There were not.
Thank you. So the public comment period is now closed. Do we have a motion from council? If you could verbally say it.
Sure.
You could just verbally make a motion.
Okay. I will verbally move staff's recommendation on adoption of the plan line.
Thank you.
You need something more specific?
We have a motion. No, no, that's just fine. I just wanted your verbal. So it's for the record. So we have a motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Councilmember Fonzie. Roll call, please. Yes.
Councilmember Fonzie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Borbo?
Yes.
Ma'am Rango?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are on to item C2, which is a consideration of the oversight options for the proposed 2020 essential services transactions and use tax measure. And this is our administrative services director, Ms. Jerry Rangel.
Actually, I will be during the presentation tonight.
Oh, okay.
For Ms. Rangel. Luke, would you could you share my screen again? Okay, did that come up correctly?
Yes.
All right. Anyway, tonight, I want to talk about oversight for the proposed 2020 essential services sales tax measure. I know that we spent a considerable amount of time at our July 14 meeting, talking about oversight and what the council wanted to see as you were approving that, proving to put that on the ballot. Some of your key priorities at that meeting is that you did want to make sure that we formally engage the public. You wanted a lot of public outreach, a lot of public participation. You wanted accountability and developing that plan of accountability. And you wanted to look to minimize additional administrative costs as good stewards of public funds. So at that meeting, the minutes reflect that you you took directed staff to implement public engagement and accountability for the proposed essential sales tax measure ordinance, should it be passed by tasked voters in the general election. You went on further to say in phase one, you wanted to expand the current process to include more outreach, commit to a date for the city's council strategic planning workshop prior to the holiday break, and placing an estimated time on the agenda for the workshop when open discussion will take place so that public knows when to attend. When it came to phase two, which was more of the accountability after the fact, is you wanted to implement option number five, which was the annual report, as detailed in the staff report. And you wanted to make sure that those annual reports included metrics and narratives in the report that can tell the story of where the funds were generated by the sales tax measure. Staff has developed and put some more details onto the plan. There are a lot of rumors out there that there is no oversight on this. There is definitely a lot of oversight. And I want to make sure that we are on the correct path and are getting the type of oversight and the public participation that council is looking for. So our our regular public process for all of our funds, not just the D20, is that we always encourage public input, not just during the budget process, but during the whole budget cycle, two years, we want to get that public input and participation. For this particular measure, for measure D20, we talked about the first budget year after implementation will be the most critical because this is expected to go for ongoing costs of operations. So once you commit to use the funds for something such as new police officers, while it certainly is possible to lay off the police officers and, you know, come back or or clawback raises for police officers or any of those other things, it will be very difficult once the community is used to a certain service level. So I want to make sure that we all understand that. This is our typical process for budgets. We always gather information and public input constantly. The council, the city staff, members of every operating department are constantly getting gathering input and information. We take all of that to our council strategic planning session where we establish priorities. Staff takes their strategic planning and we refine revenue projections and we basically come and develop an action plan that says this is what we're going to achieve in the next two year budget cycle. You would adopt the action plan. The finance committee goes through the budget in painful detail. Thank you to my finance committee meeting members and those who've ever served on that. We have a number of those where we go through that. The budget will be eventually adopted by council and then it goes through. You wanted to increase and make this a more robust process. And so what staff understood that to maybe look like is that we would have a series of 10 proposed study sessions. We would do those study sessions from January through February. We would do them at different dates of days of the week, different times of the day, morning, afternoon, evening, Saturdays, trying to make sure that everybody in the public would be able to attend at least one meeting. All of the meetings would have a similar format for those so that the public didn't have to attend all 10 of them, but could instead attend one or two if they liked and participate that way. These are just some of the dates and times that we are proposing at this moment for these sessions. So like I said, you can see they're they're kind of scattered throughout the week and scattered with different times. The format of those study sessions is we would start with an education component where city staff, fire chief, police chief, and others would talk about what services are provided by the city and what the current service levels are. For example, right now, police department has minimum staffing of three officers on duty. They are at minimum staffing 52% of the time. We want the people that are participating in these to know those types of things so that they understand, you know, where we are and where so they can better articulate where they want to be. We're also going to talk about what the current needs are to maintain current service levels. As you know, we are having some financial difficulties. We continue to have to dip into reserves to balance the budget. And we're not, we are ignoring or deferring some of those costs, long term costs, such as fire trucks and some of those things. So to maintain those current service levels, you would have to address those things eventually. And then the bulk of the study session would be devoted to public exercises. These, we're still developing a lot of the details, but those exercises would be to try and tease out what service level would attendees like the city to provide? And what does the right service level look like? Not just, hey, we want more police officers on duty. But it's very important to me that I can have a police officer respond when I call within an hour or within a time limit. Or, hey, I think it's very important that we have enough staffing that we can expand our CAT team program where we go out and try and get services to some of our homelessness and get them off the streets. What is it that that looks like? What is your vision? Not just what's the solution, hire more police officers, but what do you want to achieve with that? And what is success and how should it be measured? So that's the type of information that we want to get in those study sessions. And we want to make sure that it's done in an environment that everybody can feel comfortable expressing their opinion and getting what that looks like. Because it it may not look the same to everybody. I will guarantee that it does not. I will guarantee that not everybody's priorities are the same. But I think it's important that we hear from everybody on what those are. So we're, we're looking at maybe breakout sessions where there might be, you know, one or two small groups go off and talk about police and with the police personnel and one, you know, will talk about fire and one, this or that, and maybe we switch. So we're, we're still playing with some of that. But I wanted to check and make sure we're on the right track. From there, we would then take and compile all of that information that was given, every single person's response and information. And we would bring that to a council strategic planning session. We are tentatively scheduling those for February 19 and 20. We will want to make sure that any new council members could make those and everybody can make those. But that's, that's the timeframe we're aiming for. And at that strategic planning session, and and I would imagine the vast majority of the strategic planning session, if not all, would be devoted towards really fleshing out, okay, these are the priorities and the goals of the city. This is what, based on all of that input that we received, this is what success looks like for us. This is what we want to see. These are the service levels that we want to see. From there, just for the extra measure of transparency, we'd like to add an extra meeting at the next council meeting, which would be March 9. We would bring kind of a recap of of the council direction from strategic planning to a regular council meeting. So you could receive additional input there. We would be aiming for, again, staff would develop an action plan. That action plan would have specific actions, be a little bit different than maybe some of the ones that we've seen on those big goals. It would have a lot more specific actions. Would have the estimated cost of those actions and what metrics we're going to use to determine whether we're achieving our goals with those actions. From there, we go to the finance committee meeting. The finance committee meeting would continue to review the budget in very minute detail and would also be reviewing the expenditure of the D20 funds, how they fit into the budget, where all that goes. These would be extremely well publicized. As you know, we haven't had a lot of, it's tough getting public participation in these meetings. We're working with an outreach plan with Terry on how to get it out. And that's the case for all of these meetings, the study sessions, the action plans, all strategic planning. We want as much participation as we can. So we will have six more public meetings talking about budgeting and the D20 funds. After you've done all that, we would adopt the budget for all funds, including D20. That will be a total of the, that will be the 20th public meeting discussing the expenditure of D20 funds. So everybody should have a shot. If you can't attend one of the 20 meetings or more, certainly, we always take inputs through phone calls, emails, and other contacts also. After we finish that, we would have our first annual report prepared and distributed citywide on what D20 funds were budgeted and what will be accomplished with that spending. The finance committee would look at that report before and go through that in minute detail, our 21st meeting, before it goes to council for approval and we'd get that out. So that is all prior to us receiving our first dollar of D20 funds, all of that public input. The next kind of phase is accountability on that tells us where we're going to spend the funds. The accountability is reporting on what was accomplished and where it was, where we, what we did with it. You, I was directed to prepare an annual report. That annual report will be reviewed by the finance committee again at a heavily publicized meeting. We would talk in detail on what the expenditure, what the funds were expended on. Again, we're not looking at, you know, specific invoices similar to F14. But in general, hey, we, we hired five more police officers. We hired three more CAT team members, those types of things. They would include a narrative and stories on what the funds were used for, what was accomplished, success stories, those types of things. And they would include metrics. Hey, we were able to increase minimum staffing from three to four percent of the time, three to four members. You know, we were only at three members staffing, you know, less than 3% of the period. And these, that allowed us to do these things. And then, of course, we have our annual audit. So that, that is what I understood my direction from the July 14 meeting was. Since then, I have met with the chamber board and they expressed some concerns on lack of a new or separate oversight committee, separate from the finance committee. They are saying that there are members of the public that need additional levels of assurance that funds are actually spent in priority areas. And they said basically, just the lack of something called an oversight committee breeds Some of the reasons that we, the council, decided not to include or create this extra administrative committee is that your desire was to involve as much of the public as possible, not just a few people that were selected to to do this. There are substantial administrative costs on some of the options. There's additional layers between the voters and the expenditure of funds. Appointed committee members are not accountable to to any of the voters or or any of that. The expenditures will be audited annually. The public has vast access to financial information. If anybody wants to know anything about where city funds are spent, there is a lot of detail that we are provide, not just through public requests, but between financial statements, budgets, check warrant reports, you guys approved every check that was issued in the month of August tonight. You know, there's information on salary schedules. There's information, a lot of information out there. And if anybody wants to know more, we have a lot more detail there. And the finance committee will review expenditures and and where the funds are going. That's a public meeting. Would love to see some more involvement on that. If the council desired to add the oversight committee and to kind of address some of those concerns that are out there, add that extra layer accountability. We think that inviting an oversight committee to review the annual report either prior to in conjunction with or instead of the finance committee would not add a substantial amount of administrative costs if we use the existing citizens' sales tax oversight committee in particular. We've talked a little bit about when you set up another committee, there's all the training in Form 700s and other items, certainly not an insurmountable cost, but there are costs to to keeping those up to date. In addition, you could invite the C stock committee members to send them special invitations to, you know, the finance committee meetings and and other things also to get them involved in all of the city's budget and understand that. So those are some options that are available to you along with anything on the July 14 meeting that you had seen. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I will look, Councilmember Fonzie.
Michelle, are we assuming that we won't have COVID lockdown and it won't be Zoom meetings?
Rochelle, are we assuming that we won't have COVID lockdown and it won't be Zoom meetings?
I am certainly hoping that it will, uh, we will provide a lot of options, right? So we're going to provide, uh, non-Zoom and Zoom because even if we're not on lockdown, there are still those maybe with, uh, that don't feel comfortable going out in public. We want to make sure they have access. Um, but in-person is certainly does facilitate, uh, getting that input. We're getting much better at, uh, things like breakout sessions and some like that. But, uh, we definitely want to, uh, try and get those in-person if possible.
Yeah, I think we've seen so, you know, much fewer, uh, people being involved in our city council meetings and public. You know, I don't know how to explain, but I'm, I'm finding that I feel that we're not getting the same level of input that we had when we were truly public and they could walk in the door. And I'd like to give some thought to how we could implement this if we were under COVID, perhaps with, uh, an email address where they can send in their ideas or something that's non-threatening. Because if you have your face on the screen, you don't just go and put a little sticky on the board and you're anonymous. And I'm not sure how to address this. I'm kind of tired tonight, so I'm probably not as sharp as I should be, but, uh, maybe somebody else can pick up on this.
Okay. Um, so we could certainly get creative on those types of things if we're in lockdown.
Councilmember Funk. You're muted.
Thank you. Sorry, thinking of being tired, yeah. Uh, you mentioned that there'd be the option of, of, uh, working with the citizens' sales tax oversight committee on this. Uh, we, I mean, obviously, I feel really strongly that the council can't, um, pass the buck on overs- and, uh, accountability to a non-elected citizen committee. That we have to be, you know, accountable directly to the voters for that, for the wise expenditure of the funds that they entrust the, the government with. But that being said, I think that there, that, uh, could we make the review that the finance committee does, a joint meeting with the citizens' sales tax oversight committee and the finance committee? And then ask the citizens' sales tax committee to report to the city council on its thoughts. I think that that would give us, um, in, ensure that we have some people who are going to pay a level of attention to the discussion, um, with enough depth that we, we hear what we need to hear, um, about how the money is being spent. Um, and if it's a distinct committee without, you, can we pull this off without adding, without creating extra bureaucracy? That's what I'm looking for.
Uh, that is, uh, definitely an option. We can do that. That would not take a, if we had one agenda and one way to do that, would not take a significant additional amount of work.
I think that'd be worth doing, uh, just as a, as a extra piece. Um, I'd also really encourage, as we think about metrics. Um, so I, you know, I work in healthcare in my day job, um, and we have a lot of concern. You have, have, you know, some metrics or things like, did your blood pressure go up? But the one that really counts is, did your blood pressure go up enough that you had a stroke? Okay, so the, the outcomes versus the internal things. And here we kind of have, you know, did we add police staffing? Yes or no? What was our staffing level? Um, that's an, that's an interim measure of performance. And what we really care about for the public is, how fast did the police respond? How many calls were there that they couldn't, that they dropped or couldn't respond to or, or had to wait so long? How many, you know, r- reports could we not follow up on in person or whatever? To just try to find some things that are really about what peop- people receive. How many homeless people have we gotten housed? You know, you know, through collective efforts. Um, those kinds of, of, um, measures will be more useful to the public. I mean, we have tons of data about the finance of the city and a budget that's this thick. And, you know, I sometimes use it to prop up my, uh, laptop on Zoom. Uh, but it, uh, but it's hard to tease out the important information from all of that for the public. So that's where our reporting really needs to help them, so that we can focus on what are the important things? What do we want to do with this money? What about, what's our action plan? Did we do those things we said we were going to do? What do we get for it? Do, did we reduce police turnover? Do we have, um, uh, good fire safety? Uh, did we man- did we manage to replace equipment that would needs it? Those, those kinds of measures that are about our capa- the, our citizens. And that's what they care about.
And I think based upon what the, what our, the city manager went through in terms of all the meetings and coming up with those metrics, we want the public to be a part of that too. Like what is it that's important to you? So it'll be a, a conversation with hopefully many, many members of the public in developing what these metrics are. So, absolutely. Uh, Mayor Potembo, did you have any questions?
No, any questions. I'll have comments, but I want to wait till after, you know, we finish with public comment.
Okay. Uh, and I would just ask the city manager, uh, my, what I want to make sure we do is we're not just segregating out just this piece of the sales tax measure. I want to make sure that there is, you know, if we're doing something with oversight, you know, like a formal oversight, that we're doing the entire general fund and not just this small p- I don't, I don't want to say small, but I mean relatively small in comparison to the whole. Um, I would like it to be the whole and not just the small piece because it's kind of funny to me that we'd say, you know, like, let's have oversight on this four and a half million, but not oversight on the other 22 million. Like, let's, let's put this all together. Okay, so, um, with that, let's, uh, see if we, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. And I will start by asking Luke if we have any callers or anyone on the webinar that is wishing to speak on this item.
Yes, at the moment, we have one caller, Jeff Oslin.
Good evening once again, council. Hopefully we'll make this quick so we can all go home. I fully agree with, uh, some form of oversight on the entire budget so things aren't being cut and wasted. I do, uh, think Susan had a couple of valid points. And, um, maybe tying in the other committee that's already gone through all the training might be the best option to save several hundred thousand dollars than creating a new one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oslin. Uh, anyone else, Luke?
We have no one else wishing to speak on this item.
Thank you. And I will ask our city clerk, do we have any comments that were received by email on this item?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring this back to, uh, council for, uh, comments and a motion. Uh, Mayor Potembo.
Yeah, I, to me, um, this is an extraordinary amount of meetings that the city manager outlined. Um, I think some of it, quite frankly, is in reaction to, you know, she mentioned the chamber board. Oh, there's got to be something, you know, you elect the city council to provide oversight over everything the staff does, um, especially including money. And I don't, and, and people complain about government being inefficient. And then we talk about creating additional committees. That's, you know, contrary to, to my sense of efficiency, certainly. The key here is you're going to have 20, you're going to have a bunch of session, public study sessions, where people can come and discuss their, uh, what they think priorities ought to be. And I think Councilmember Fonzie mentioned dots because in, in cities that historically have real money to spend, like San Luis Obispo, they do get participation because there's, there's some real money on the table of, you know, we, you know, what should be the priority these two years, a skate park or, or bike lanes or a new fire station or what have you. We've not had that kind of money to even have those kinds of discussions on a serious basis. And this will be the first time that we do. So it's very, to me, the important part of this process is those public study sessions. And then the strategic planning session where the council can receive additional feedback and discuss its priorities. Um, I think, you know, having the C-Stock folks, using them is great. Uh, it's much preferable to establishing an additional committee. But it, that's already starting to get a little late in the game. The important thing here is that we seek public input and we really push, you know, having people attend the strategic planning session where we're going to talk about, what are we going to do with an additional four and a half million dollars? What can we accomplish with that? And, and we've heard in these study sessions what the public wants us to accomplish with that. That's the most important part of this, uh, process for sure, in my mind. But, you know, the public should be aware, we have a finance committee that goes over, you know, every aspect of the budget. Uh, the council will have multiple opportunities to weigh in as well and people. I think it's actually, we're going to get more public input if you do some of this at regular council meetings than in the form of, uh, finance committee and/or special oversight committee meetings. Uh, before I was on the council, I attended some finance committee meetings and I was the only member of the public there ever. Um, and back, Mayor, you were chair. And so I, I don't want to engage in symbolic measures that'll make us less efficient. I think we, we got to push the public input up front and then at strategic planning session. And then, um, those are the two most important spots. And again, we are elected by the voters. We're the only ones elected by the voters. And they, if they have a concern about city spending, they need to call us, email us, what have you. Say, you know, what the hell are you doing with my money? And, and we need to be open to, uh, you know, to answering those questions. And I think we all are.
Thank you. So what it sounds like you are in, in favor of what the city manager laid out, the, the study sessions, the, the input, the strategic planning, uh, and the things after that. And for you having C-Stock combined with finance to look at that annual report, you could kind of take or leave that, but you're okay if we move forward with that?
Yeah, I think that's a fair summation of what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Funk.
I thought, I also think it's worth, um, really being mindful that the, uh, the, the large public input is crucial upfront in this first year. And that as we're going forward, we don't need the same level of input. But the focus then becomes more on the back end of, you know, learning, what did we get for them, the money? How is it working? How do we fine tune what we're doing? And, and the, you know, the pot of money that's really not obligated to, um, ongoing services is going to be much smaller. So, um, if, you know, in the first year, we're looking at the whole quantity and then lots are smaller. So, so the focus then becomes on that, that oversight and learning from what worked and what, and what's not working as well as we'd like, um, so that we can really, uh, make great use of the funds that are entrusted to us.
So it sounds like you're in concert with, uh, Mayor Potembo and how to move forward.
Yeah, yeah. I, I do think it's worth having that piece on an ongoing basis of having, as long as we have the CSTOC, to have that be a joint meeting with the finance committee to review the thing so that you're guaranteed some other voices will show up.
Yes, got it.
And report back to the council.
Got it. Yep, thank you. So I'm, we, we still got more to go through, so I'm trying to move us along here, so forgive me. Uh, Councilmember Fonzie.
I think it would be helpful if the council could come up with some categories we'd consider using the money in and then put it out to the public so they had some parameters to deal with. So we're not getting, oh, we need a new fountain in Bible Lake or we need pickleball courts all, all over town or whatever it may be. We say we're concentrating on public safety or homeless or two or three or four different subjects. We'll get more discussion because it will be somewhat guided. They'll have some direction and have an opinion about it. Just going in and saying, oh, we're going to talk about how to spend money isn't really what we want them to do. We want them to come in and talk about spending money and how it will help the city in certain ways. So I think if we had an initial, initial meeting, and perhaps that would happen in the strategic planning that Rochelle had talked about in December, then we could set up several categories for discussion to trigger more input.
So I think that would probably happen at the Tuesday, uh, January 12th council meeting. And that also, you know, based upon what the city manager said, they would start out each session with, hey, here are the needs and the areas that we really need to look at. So somebody could feel free to come along and talk about fountains or this, that or the other. But it's likely not going to get any traction unless every single member of the community said, hey, we don't want any more police, we want 27 more fountains. I'm exaggerating, but yes, it's late. Uh, so I think, um, if I would ask our city manager, we could have that conversation on the 12th. And then moving forward in those meetings, you would have those parameters.
That was my intent of the meeting on the 12th. It will be at the city council meeting, um, to, to set up some of that and, and walk through that.
Perfect.
Perfect. So it sounds like we're all in agreement with what the city manager has laid out and to use C-Stock as, as an oversight committee that would meet with the finance committee looking at the entire, you know, budget, the entire report, um, as oversight after the fact. Is that, all right, do I have a motion?
I think we were just providing guidance and we just did.
Um. I need a motion.
I will move that we, um, adopt the recommended plan of oversight in act, action with the amendment, um, that, um, the, um, at a provision that the review of the, the annual review of expenditures will be conducted as a joint meeting with the citizens' tax oversight committee and the finance committee. And that the citizens' tax oversight committee will be, um, asked to report its, its findings to the city council.
Rochelle.
If I could just clarify, you're not looking at specific expenditures like this police office, this new police officer's radio. You're looking in general, the annual report, those types of things that we've been talking about, correct?
Right, this would be the summer to review the, the, as we've discussed, a, a report that, that talks about how, how expenditures have changed, what were the actions that we said we'd take? What of those have we taken? Um, and what have we gotten for our money? What's the narrative?
Perfect, that, thank you for that clarification.
That report is what the, what the, the two committees should spend time really reviewing together to make sure that it addresses the issues that the citizens have, that we've learned what we need to learn from this process. And that, um, the report characterizes those findings honestly to the public.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Funk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember, Councilmember Fonzie, second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Fonzie?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Potembo?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, we are on to a discussion item for COVID. Um, the good news, of course, is that we have moved from the purple category to the red category. So there are indoor options that our businesses now have with modifications. So that includes, of course, dine-in restaurants, fitness centers, um, hair salons and barber shops, movie theaters as well, uh, personal care services, um, retail can expand capacity, uh, worship services indoors, um, things like that. So that is good news. Uh, we, you know, we need to, of course, keep that, that metric low, that number, um, of, you know, seven or fewer per 100,000 residents per day. Uh, we have two weeks before we move forward or backward. So our weeks are every Friday and it gets reported out Tuesday. So if for some reason this Friday and then Tuesday, our numbers have gone back up, they would have to stay elevated for another week for us to move backwards. So, um, you know, Friday, we saw some large numbers, but in the last three days, they've come back down a little bit. So, uh, I think many of us are hopeful that that might continue. And the state has, if you look at the state website, they actually show us like at a 4.3 or 4.8 and we're not sure how they're coming up with that number. We like the number, but we don't know where they're coming up with it. Uh, so anyway, it's, it's moving in the right direction, so that is some good news. And I would ask the city manager, did you have anything that you wanted to, to add?
I think you covered it well, Mayor. Thank you.
Sure thing. Uh, any questions on that at all? Uh, any questions on that at all? All right, seeing none. Uh, I will ask if there are any callers or folks on the webinar that would like to speak on this item.
There are not.
And Laura, did we receive any comments that were received by email?
We did not.
All right. So now we will see if in under eight minutes, so we don't have to make a motion to go past 11, can we get through our, uh, council announcements and committee reports? So I will just kind of go in my Hollywood squares here and I'll start with, uh, Mayor Protem Borbo.
Uh, nothing to report. IW May did not meet in September, so, uh, um, nothing to report at this time. I will have something under council determinations.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Uh, Homeless Services Oversight Council met last week and continues to work on trying to coordinate all of the, um, homeless outreach and, uh, inter, and try to prevent a tsunami of evictions from creating more problems.
Thank you. Councilmember Fonzie.
Nothing to report.
And I have nothing to report as well, so we can move on to, um, individual determinations. Uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protem Borbo.
Yeah, I was, you know, I think you've all received the same emails. Uh, we received another one this week regarding, um, status of pickleball courts and, uh, the group that had raised money in support of that. Um, and then, you know, a revised higher cost estimate came in, you know, which would certainly necessitate some greater fundraising on their part, or most likely, I should say. Uh, and, and so they're feeling a little more like, you know, goal posted has been moved. Um, but, uh, what I, what I'd like to do is at some point in the next couple of months is have, have it on the agenda that staff bring back, um, a little more, nothing in great, in super great detail, but a little more than the verbal report that the city manager gave us a while back on, on where we're at on that and what might be some options, um, on that. Because the city council will have a determination at some point to make of what it's willing to put forward in terms of, uh, park fees to help support that kind of project. And so I'd like to have a discussion of what some of the options are in that regard. And, you know, like I said, not, maybe not in October, but within the next couple of months or something, I think that would be a worthwhile discussion.
Um, I, I'd be willing to have that discussion as well. Um, I think it's also good for, you know, the public to know when we, when we do use impact fees and, you know, kind of looking at some of our past projects to see the level of fundraising that has happened before the city kicked in fees, I think is very important. Uh, so I think that would be a good conversation to have publicly. Um, would we have consensus on that? With my, my, I'm seeing nods. Um, and I would ask our city manager, uh, when you look at our schedule, what, what feels doable for you? As, as Mayor Protem Borbo said, it's not an urgent need, but we want to get to it in the near future.
I think that, that one of the meetings in November, uh, I would have to look and kind of arrange, but we can do, do it then.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Any others? All right, I am seeing none. Uh, any, any from staff? City clerk, anybody? No? All right.
No.
Woo, 10:55, media, so, meeting adjourned.
Out of here.
Thank you all.
Don't have, don't have far as to home.